For everybody being here, to a big delegation this morning. First, I want to start out, obviously congratulating the candidates in the by-election, or the, sorry, the by-election, the election on Saturday. And congratulations to the four incumbents successfully returning to council and to Paul Javecov and Mark Rogers. Congratulations. We look forward to having you guys part of council in the coming years. And thank you to Duncan and Sue who will be finishing off at the end of this month. So anyway, we'll talk a little bit more about that later on. I want to call our public hearing notice from our corporate administration.
Thank you. As required by the Local Government Act, this public hearing is being held to hear from anyone who may be affected by the proposed changes to the city zoning bylaw. The proposed amendment in bylaw number 4243 incorporates the regulations governing comprehensive development zone two into the zoning bylaw. This zone allows for a range of mixed uses and is based on the Sunset Ridge Harvest View Neighborhood Plan that is outlined in the official community plan. The property located at 8717th Street is currently the only property in the city's zone CD2, and there were no written comments received regarding this amendment.
Thank you. Is there any correspondence or delegation?
No.
So, call for first time for any comments?
Yes, good morning, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak against 4243. My name is Greg Gillespie. I'm the manager of acquisition planning with Western Canadian Properties Group. We are the owner of the CD2 zone in question, and I must object in the strongest possible terms for this item being on the agenda in the first place. Section 892 of the Local Government Act clearly outlines notice requirements as it relates to public hearings, and we as owners receive no such notice. We receive no such notice of this public hearing in relation to 4243. In fact, on November 7th, I asked the Director of Corporate Administration, Brenda Ginter, for a copy of the notice for this public hearing. I was anticipating a response as it relates to 4244, and in quite specifically, I received a copy of that notice for bylaw 4244. It wasn't until I checked the Dawson Creek website for the agenda package for this public hearing in preparation for 4244 that we saw that 4243 was on the agenda. And again, I must object in the strongest possible terms that the notice requirements in section 892 of the Local Government Act have not been met as it relates to this bylaw. And we vehemently oppose this bylaw being discussed today and certainly would object to any further discussion or passing of this bylaw. I think the legal ramifications are going to be quite clear if council decides to go against section 892 of the Local Government Act. And again, WCPG, in the strongest possible terms, objects to 4243 being on the agenda today as we receive no such notice.
Thank you. Councilor Morkinson?
Your worship should be addressed that point right now, rather than...
Thank you. We'll ask administration.
Through your worship, this is a public hearing. Your role here is to hear comments from the public. I don't know if anyone else wishes to comment or not.
Thank you. Any further comments? For a second time? And for a third time, is there any further comments? Okay, thank you. So, thank you. We appreciate that feedback, that information, and we absolutely will bring that back through to deal with it. So, we'll at this time close that public hearing. Next public hearing we have this morning is dealing with bylaw 4244, so I'll ask our Director of Corporate Administration to read aloud the notice, please.
Thank you. This public hearing is being held to hear from anyone who may be affected by the proposed zoning, the proposed changes to the city zoning bylaw through bylaw number 4244. This zoning amendment bylaw is based on the recommendations from the Residential Development Committee and affects all residential areas within the city. There were many responses received, all of which were included in the public hearing agenda for council's review. And before hearing any delegations, I will turn it over to Kevin Henderson to briefly describe the amendments proposed within the bylaw.
Thank you. Kevin?
Yeah, good morning. So I'll just briefly go through all the amendments that were proposed in the bylaw which were stemmed out of the Residential Development Committee meetings. The first point was on suites. The committee recommended that suites not be permitted in all single-family zones and not permitted at all in duplexes. The committee recommended that suites only be permitted in RS2 zone and only be permitted in a single-family dwelling in that zone. Also, other proposed requirements around suites would include increased parking and the maximum size of the suite, and that the owner of the single-family dwelling would live in the dwelling as the primary owner. Coach houses, the committee recommended that coach houses only be permitted in conjunction with single-family dwelling without a suite, again, only in an RS2 zone. Parking, the committee recommended that parking requirements be increased in all residential zones to help with the off-street parking concerns brought up through the committee. Specifically, parking for suites was identified. Therefore, a proposed requirement for one stall per bedroom within the suite is proposed. Another recommendation was that parking spaces be increased in size due to larger vehicles that we see frequent the community, help accommodate some larger pickups. Another component of parking was that the permitted weight allowable in a residential zone was reduced from 4,000 kg to 1,000 kg to be consistent with the parking bylaw. Accessory buildings, and when we talked about accessory buildings, it was targeted specifically to garages. The committee recommended increasing the size of an accessory buildings from a maximum of 750 square feet to a maximum of 780 square feet, again, to help accommodate for larger Parcel sizes. A number of recommendations came forward that looked to increase the minimum parcel sizes for single-family dwellings or single-family dwellings with suites and duplexes. Again, this was brought forward to help deal with increased parking and off-street parking issues, help accommodate for utility corridors and snore removal. Frontages, the committee recommended that the minimum parcel frontages be increased to help accommodate parking, green space, no storage in utility corridors. Some of the parcel frontages are looked to be increased as much as 50%. Rooming houses. The committee recommended that the definition be changed as well as the owner of the dwelling to live in there and also a business license be acquired to help regulate rooming houses. And I think that's the majority of the major changes that were proposed by the committee for the zoning.
Thank you, Kevin. So, Councilor McFadden, do you have a question?
Kevin, if I could, your very, very first comment there, I thought I heard you say that there would be no in-law suites in any single-family house. Did I hear that? I heard that wrong, I think, didn't I?
Yeah, so what it was is they'd not be permitted in all single-family. Currently, the zoning permits suites in all single-family homes.
Yes, okay.
And it would be only permitted in single-family homes in a particular zone, and it was proposed to be in an RS2 zone.
That's right, thank you.
Thank you. So, you know, first I want to ask if I can, we've had a number of people have registered to present this morning as delegations, and we're absolutely going to use that as a priority in terms of how we seek feedback as the public hearing process does proceed. And so, I would like to get a sense if I can, so we've had a request from Mr. Dwayne Stewart, Vice President of Western Canadian Properties, David Kuing and Rob Clark from Northern Priority Construction who have registered as a delegation. But I just, if I can, if somebody can just get a quick show of hands, people who wish to speak this morning, so I can get a sense of the timing in terms of how much time we're going to need to allow the public hearing to proceed and give that allocation of time for the delegation. So, as I say, I know for sure we've had two requests. Okay. So I've got six in addition to the two that have requested, so we're going to allocate then a 10-minute timeframe for each of the delegations to speak and keep it within an appropriate time for the public hearing process. So, first, any other correspondence or delegation? Brenda?
Um...
Just other than what we've received?
Only those that were included on the agenda.
Thank you. So, item 3.1 then, we have Mr. Dwayne Stewart, Vice President of Western Canadian Properties Group in attendance, who's going to give a presentation. I believe, Dwayne, you have a PowerPoint presentation?
Yeah, is it on there or shall I use the fob?
Sorry.
Great, thank you very much.
Is it all right like that or?
If you got both, that'd be great.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you today, and congratulations for those of you that were re-elected, and for those of you that are joining council coming forward. And to Duncan and Sue, thank you so much for your service. Worked with you a few times in the past, and thank you for your service to your community. This安稳 neighborhood development plan was the reason that Western Canadian Properties Group came to Dawson Creek. We had an opportunity to view a number of different cities in our process of choosing where to invest in northern British Columbia, and this plan, which I trust you've all read and absorbed in detail, is a big reason why we came and bought almost 40 acres in the area. This is the major overview of the plan, and what you can see here is a well-thought-out mix of streets, different types of density, different types of homes, from large residential lots having only 12 units on a hectare to larger single-family residential units at 22 units a hectare, to more dense multifamily village residential, 32 to 41 units a hectare, to high-density 63 units per hectare residential, and some mixed-use village center, and of course, green space, stormwater detention ponds to make it possible, and a well-thought-out street pattern that gives alleyways as a key means of facilitating some of the expected uses in this area. We've come before council several times with different aspects of this zone, and each time council has given great direction in the category of you must follow the plan. Mr. Schut admonished me the last time I was here for proposing something that was outside the plan, and I respect the leadership that that showed, and I'm hopeful that council can see today that we do continue to need that leadership. We've taken dozens and dozens of people, I think we're well over 150 investors now, that have come to Dawson Creek, and we've promoted your town as a place to come to invest and to see grow over time. Thousands of investors have seen our presentations in Vancouver and the area, and we know that you've been listed as a top investment town. In fact, that investment listing was one of the reasons that Dawson Creek was on our radar. And I can tell you that if this bylaw passes as it is, your ranking in that investment list is in jeopardy. It has been a key economic driver, I believe, for Dawson Creek, and it has, you know, we've tried to improve the reputation of Dawson Creek by promoting your plan, particularly the OCP. Bylaw 4244 is a result of a committee that was asked to regulate secondary suites, parking, green space, landways, percentage of habitable floor space, shared space, and exterior design. When this committee was formed back in March, that's what it was asked to do. The report that's come out of that committee, in our opinion, does reach further than that request. Not a little bit further, but significantly further. I've said that we're using a bulldozer when a shovel will do. There are specific issues and aspects that need to be addressed. The OCP is not perfect, the zoning bylaw isn't perfect, and council should absolutely take into consideration the concerns of the community and should adjust. Our concern is that this adjustment is so tremendously different. The zoning change creates chaos for existing owners. You're proposing to create hundreds of non-conforming properties in the community. Kevin Henderson wrote a report on October 15th where he very correctly and wisely outlined the significant impacts to the community. That report, I think, was all that needed to be said with regards to the problems with the zone, and I think I should, I would encourage you to reread his report from October the 15th. The ability for existing non-conforming buildings to receive insurance, financing, and potentially occupancy of those non-conforming uses should this bylaw pass affects all of the investors that have partnered with you in the community, and I fear for them should this bylaw be passed. As I've said, Kevin, I did write a report that properly outlines that. In order to provide a sustainable community, you need to provide affordability. I think that's a reasonable statement that we can all agree on. By decreasing your density across the community, you reduce affordability, you increase costs, and you prevent the efficient use of the land. This ALR land that we're building on is precious. It should be treated as such. Proper densification, proper use of that land, is what the OCP was designed to do. You correctly told us this is how you should develop our precious resource, and we've bought into that plan. This bylaw eliminates the plan. The actual bylaw states within it that it shall remove the reference, and all references thereto, of the official community plan. It's a shocking inclusion in the changes that I'm surprised to see. Flip-flopping of this nature does undermine the credibility of the leadership of the community, and it concerns us that that is probably not the intent of this council, but it is in fact the result of this bylaw. A 650-meter to a 950-meter lot size increase is a 46% increase in the cost of land and infrastructure. A lot cost could go up by $55,000. When I first sat here with your previous council and the previous mayor, he said to me, "I can't wait for a return to the $50,000 lot." We are not selling lots at $50,000, but we're also not proposing to sell them at $50,000 more than we are today by making them artificially larger in every circumstance. We think the rental cost will go up, up to $412 per month, as investors seek to recover that additional cost should they have to comply with this bylaw. We also firmly believe that potential investors and residents will go to other cities. Somebody said to me the other day, "Is Pouskouk going to be bigger than Dawson Creek?" I said, "Well, if bylaw 4244 is passed, perhaps." Coach houses are a great addition to your OCP, and the alleyways in the previous slide are utilized most efficiently with a coach house, and we've built a number of them, and they've been greatly, very well received by both residences and the investors. And it is something that figures prominently. I'm pleased to see that you've allowed them a single-family use. I would encourage you to consider to allow them on a properly-zoned and sized multifamily lot. And the alleyways become less valuable without a coach house. And with regards to the existing ones, making them non-conforming is a broken promise. I talked a little bit about the ALR land. The stated environmental guiding principles of Dawson Creek, which talks about demonstrating respect for the earth, promoting and demonstrating renewable energy, and advocating the preservation of healthy land, is not being served by 4244. This is the average truck in Dawson Creek. We have two of them parked out front here this morning, in fact, perhaps more than two. That is the larger vehicle that was discussed by Kevin a moment or two ago. That vehicle weighs almost 3,000 kilograms. You can't have that anymore. You can only have that vehicle. That weighs 850 kilograms. The 1,000-kilogram vehicle is an interesting aspect of the bylaw. Obviously, it's something that you can fix, but the reality is that the fact that that exists in the bylaw shows the lack of thought that went into the impact of each aspect of the bylaw. And I would encourage you to consider whether or not today you can pass third reading on a bylaw that includes larger parking stalls for lighter, smaller VW bugs. You have a fiscal gap in Dawson Creek. It was a big part of your conversation in the past election. That fiscal gap will not become narrower by reducing your tax base. By providing fewer lots on more land that cost more to service, you cannot fix your fiscal gap. Less is not more, more is actually more. Where will you put your retirees? Retirees don't wish to be on a bigger lot. They would like to be in a creative residence that is either a single-level, relatively small, easy-to-maintain lot, or perhaps they would like to be in a complex that provides multiple residents of that size. Two minutes. We believe that it will impact not only your schools, which are struggling now, but it will impact retirees in the long term. Why adopt an official community plan? You have legitimate complaints in one part of the city over issues that I believe are around rooming houses. You should regulate rooming houses. Rooming houses are not part of the OCP. We do not believe in them, we do not promote them, they're not part of our development, they're not part of the vision that you gave us, and we accept they should be eliminated. And you should deal with single-family suites, you should deal with duplexes. Having suites, we're okay with that. We're okay with the concept of a suite duplex is a fourplex. It should go on the size of multifamily lot, 900 meters, previously indicated in the OCP. We're okay with that. We're not upset about everything in the proposed changes because changes need to be made, but the way this particular bylaw is written is dramatically flawed, and the OCP and the vision that you created for the community, you need to stick with it, please. You've asked us to stick with it in the past. We ask only that you stick with it again. Make small precision changes, not sweeping declarations. Please understand the consequences. Reject the amendment as proposed, and thank you so much for your time today. Is there any questions that I can answer?
Thank you. So, quickly, does anybody have a question? Thank you, Dwayne. Next, we have David Kuing and Rob Clark from Northern Priority Construction are in attendance.
Good morning. My name's David Kuing, Northern Priority Construction. I'd like to say thanks for having me here this morning, but on Friday, I made a phone call to the city of Dawson Creek, and my problem was mitigated with a friendly phone call. I do have a lot of issues with your change in your bylaw. Some sound like they're already handled in a way that I'm happy, and here's a path for you all, because I'd like to say thanks this morning, and I'm sure this is all going to go good for you and for us. I've got a good feeling that this will be handled quite nicely this morning. There's a lot of representation from a good part of your construction community, and I'd say you should all really listen up to what's being said. The man in front of me said it real well. I'm not a good public speaker, but I think it's going to go good, and thank you.
Thank you. Blaine?
We don't want 20 minutes.
Can I get, you're not getting 20. Can we get, just introduce yourselves for...
My name is Blaine Nicholson. I'm managing broker-owner of Remax Dawson Creek Realty.
And I'm Joe Marsha. I'm here with the prime engineering.
So both Joe and I, we're local boys. We were born and raised here. I raised my family here. Joe is planning on raising his family here. We both want to see good things happen in the city of Dawson Creek, but we want to see it happen in a coordinated fashion. I think what's happening here with this bylaw that is before us today is that we all realize that there have to be changes made to the existing bylaw, but it seems like what's happening here is that you're grabbing the pendulum and you're flinging it in an opposite direction, and it's causing many more problems than we have right now. The first speaker that was here today covered a whole lot of items that I had on my notes here, and unfortunately, I just got back to town after being away for a few weeks, so I don't have a real coordinated presentation for you here today, but there's a few items that I would like to touch on. The real estate market is something that you can't force one way. If the market demands something to take place, it will take place. If you try to force the market to do something and it doesn't satisfy what they are demanding, that market will go elsewhere, and there's communities around us that would gladly take the investment that's coming to Dawson Creek and take it away from us. I truly believe that this bylaw before us, as it is today, doesn't need just a few minor tweaks. It needs a whole lot of work, if not just put it totally aside and unfortunately start over again. There's so many things in there, and I've only had a couple of days to go through it, but there's so many things in there that I ran across just does not suit what the market is demanding of Dawson Creek. If you go to, to use an analogy, if you go to the car lots in Dawson Creek, there's no cars on the car lots in Dawson Creek. It's probably 90 or 95% trucks and SUVs. You can't go to the car dealership and say, "Sell everything, but only sell cars and have a couple pickup trucks." The market does not go along with what you force the car dealerships to do. It wouldn't happen, and in this case, I think that's where we're sitting right now. The LNG is the reason that we are where we are today, and one of the reasons that these LNG proponents are coming to our area, coming to British Columbia, coming to Canada, is because of the stability in our market. They're not going to other countries that have gas because of the instability. Canada is a stable country. B.C. is a stable country. When you take a pendulum in Dawson Creek and fling it, we're not a stable community. The investors in Dawson Creek will and can go elsewhere. Fiscal gap and housing affordability, this here flies in the face of that. The fiscal gap, a single-family residence produces approximately 5,000, a higher-end house will produce approximately $5,000. A duplex will produce somewhere around $7,500. There's at least a $2,500 difference. You can't be saying, "Hey, guys, let's not have any more duplexes," and that in effect is what this bylaw will do. There won't be any more duplexes if you have to have 900 square meters for a duplex. The developer won't do that because the cost of the duplex lot goes from approximately $89,000 up to about $150,000. As the previous speaker was saying, there's about $55,000 increase, and then you're losing your tax revenue as well if no one is developing the duplexes. It just doesn't seem to make any sense. I think the bylaw as it is right now stifles real estate investment in Dawson Creek to such an extent that it almost stops real estate development in Dawson Creek. The bylaw we have right now does need some tweaking, it does need some changes. There are some situations in Dawson Creek that are untenable. There's parking on the street. We realize that there has to be some more off-street parking, yet that's common sense. What's there before us right now, as the previous speaker said with the example of the Volkswagen bug, there's no vehicle on any car lot in Dawson Creek that would be allowed in these subdivisions anymore. It doesn't make any sense. The developer that Joe and I represent, or that we represent, is the largest developer in Dawson Creek. He's a local developer. Typically, it takes us about two years. Other developers probably can do it a lot faster than we can, but it typically takes us about two years. Once you decide that you want to develop some land, come up with a conceptual plan, do your engineering, your design, and your layout, put in your deep services, your water and sewer, put in your hydro, tellus, cable, gas, survey it again, put in your road bed, put in your curb and gutter, put in your pavement. That takes two years. The major developer in Dawson Creek has somewhere pushing close to about $200,000 worth of all that work. all that work, oh, it's more than that, in engineering work alone, has close to $200,000 worth of engineering out there that now has to be thrown away. It makes no sense. When a bylaw comes in here and tells someone, you can, in the past said, you can do this, and then all of a sudden they change midstream or at the end of the development saying, oh, no, now you can't do that, start over again, again. It makes no sense. It's too much of a pendulum that's getting flung. Let's take the pendulum, adjust it a little bit. Don't dramatically change it as you're proposing here with this bylaw.
Thank you.
My points are very similar to Blaine's. I'd like to point out that for the developer that we're representing, there are about 30-some lots that have already been paved, serviced with lights and everything ready to go, and they'll all be nonconforming towards the new bylaw. There's another 100-and-some that have just had their water and sewer installed this last summer, and they'll be ready to go for next year, but again, will be nonconforming. And there's another 90-plus that are in the works right now for being developed, but they're on hold right now because of this particular bylaw. We're waiting for BC Hydro to come up with their design for us, but because this bylaw is in the works, BC Hydro won't develop a plan for us. So we've been on hold for at least a month, maybe a bit longer, because we're waiting for the council to kind of decide what's going to happen with these lots. And we're going to have to either try to cut our losses and make it work as best we can to conform with the new bylaw, or start from scratch and try to make a good new product. But I've seen these things developed from very beginning in the ground, in the trenches, to the very end, and it's not an easy process. And any little change makes a big difference, but this is a very, very large change, and it's going to make very substantial differences for everyone involved. It's not just a little thing that we can kind of just ignore and, you know, okay, I'm going to fudge these lines a little bit and we'll lose two or three lots. It's half lots are going to be gone if you want duplexes, and it's a big impact.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Parslow?
Yeah, I don't have a question, but I sense that all this information that's been shared by Duane and now yourselves and others, I don't know if this is possible, but I might like to indulge you in some work. For me, I would like to receive a, because both speakers who've addressed specific points have said there's some things that they recognize in our bylaw that do need to be changed, and others have, they have other issues with. I wouldn't mind having from the presenters just looking at the proposed bylaw, the, those things that you can concur with, those things that you object to, and those tweaks you might make, so that we have something like a chart to look at and then really do an in-depth review. I mean, I appreciate both presentations for sure, but I just know if you put yourselves in my shoes, I would just like to see some sort of, these are the pros, these are the cons, these are the suggestions, so that we can do, I personally can do a very serious review. Thank you.
Counselor, if I may, the letter that we provided, which is in your agenda package from our CEO.
Yeah, I've read that.
It does include that list.
Does it? Thank you. Okay.
I didn't register with that.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think, Charlie, you bring up a really good point. It's, that is such an all-encompassing thing that is before you right now. And I've had four days to kind of go over it, and I don't fully understand it. Just yesterday, I was able to finally spend several hours trying to review it, and there was many things in there that I hadn't caught previously. The first speaker's covered a lot of that, and it sounds like they've put a lot of work and effort into it. And let me tell you, companies like theirs and companies that we represent, to break away from doing your job, to have to deal with something like this is really frustrating. When I came back a few days ago and this was thrown at me, I thought, holy crap, there's no way. We rely on the city and have for six, seven, eight years, whatever it is, to just do their thing and provide us with, you know, the proper bylaws, and we sail along, we do our things. And then I think it was Dale called that meeting, or those, that series of meetings where he brought everybody in. I thought that was an excellent way of doing it, Dale, or council, whoever put those meetings together, because we didn't have, with Dale, we didn't have our competitors sitting beside us to know what we were saying, but it sounds like we all said the same thing. And I think because of what we said, this bylaw came into play. Because I remember sitting in one of the rooms downstairs saying like, geez, there's too many F-350s sitting on the road. Holy crap. Now we're talking about not any vehicle on any car lot in Dawson Creek was sued in there. So it's flawed. I would love to be able to have the time to sit down and come up with all the items. And I did read Western Canada Properties stuff there, and I see that they did make a whole lot of suggestions in there. It's a lot of work.
Thank you.
But that's the way to do it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So next, I want to move to Mr. Gillespie. You would put your hand up, you wanted to speak.
Yes. Again, my name is Greg Gillespie, manager of acquisitions and planning with Western Canadian Properties Group. I think the previous speakers have outlined some very key points. I won't go through all of the particular sections of the proposed bylaw that we agree or disagree with, that is in our package and is there for. Our CEO wrote a very detailed letter outlining those points to Mr. Parslow's concerns there. But I will take a moment to highlight a couple of key ones that sort of hit home for me. In particular, section 4.15.1.7, requiring that a single-family dwelling with a suite be occupied by the owner. I think that's a very dangerous and slippery slope. In fact, I would suggest that that is not something that council can regulate. These zoning bylaws can regulate use, but they cannot regulate the user. Again, a very slippery slope. Do we say that only single white males can live upstairs? Do we say only married couples can live upstairs? Again, these zoning bylaws are meant to regulate use, not the user, so we certainly have some very significant concerns with section 4.15 as it relates to suites. Mr. Henderson brought up some very good points about the significant impacts that this bylaw would have if passed, in particular as it relates to nonconformity and the potential to create hundreds of nonconforming properties. I was doing a little bit of math last night, and I believe it would be, I represent about a third of the people that came out to vote at the recent election, hundreds of nonconforming properties. This has very significant impacts. This March 24 report, or sorry, the March 24 Committee that was formed to explore development, regulate suites, very overreaching. And at no point did council direct the committee to eliminate the OCP and propose wholesale changes to the lot size, density and affordability. By creating these nonconforming lots, it has significant economic impacts, and this is right in the report from Mr. Henderson, affecting the economic viability of the development and the value of these properties. Some proposals will no longer be profitable, and these are developments that we have in process. These are developments that we have building permits in for. Significant changes midstream. Land transfer and potential barriers to sale. I'm sure that the Realtors in the room could speak more to this point, but if I was looking at a property on one side of the road that's nonconforming, and I'm looking at purchasing a property on the other side that is conforming, that's going to have a significant impact in my decision to purchase a property. And insurance, nonconforming properties, that's a big red flag for the insurers and could lead to significant consequences such as denial of coverage when going to insure these nonconforming properties. So those are just some minor points that I wanted to highlight. And again, I would ask you to refer to Mr. Dave Steele's letter that outlines specifically which points that we can swallow and live with and other points that we oppose in the strongest terms. I wanted to wrap up my comments here with shining a bit of a spotlight again on the Local Government Act and speaking about the purpose of an official community plan. Section 875 Sub 1, "An official community plan is a statement of objectives and policies to..." Sorry. "An official community plan is a statement of objectives and policies to guide decisions on planning and land use management." That is why OCPs contain planning language. It's the zoning bylaws themselves that actually use the implementation language to enact the policies laid out in the OCP. The Local Government Act, Section 884 Sub 2, goes on further to say, "All bylaws enacted by a council after the adoption of an official community plan must be consistent with the relevant plan." I'll read that part again. "All bylaws enacted by a council after the adoption of an official community plan must be consistent with the relevant plan. In essence, unless proposed zoning amendments are consistent with the OCP, a bylaw is vulnerable to being quashed by the courts." So I ask two key questions for council to consider. Number one, is the proposed bylaw consistent with the OCP? Is the proposed bylaw consistent with the OCP? Second question, does zoning amendment bylaw 4244 bring the city closer to implementing the objectives and the policies in the OCP? My answer would be no on both accounts. Not only does the proposed bylaw contradict the objectives and the policy within the OCP, it removes all reference to the OCP. I submit that any amending bylaw brought forth for consideration must be clear in what each amending provision will accomplish with reference to the policies in the OCP. Not only does zoning amendment bylaw 4244 fail to do this, it is wholly inconsistent with the OCP and as such ought to be defeated. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, Mr. Wayne Easert, do you have your hand up, you wanted to speak?
Yes, I do. Thank you. I'll make this fairly brief. I speak for the people of Dawson Creek that have been here for years. Those of us that have been here and have been through many of these growths and spurts and stalls and regrowth. And we bear the scars and won anyways. My, as I listen to presentations, there's some very good facts being brought forward here. But I'm in support of the majority of the plan that you have forward. I understand we're never going to please everybody, and we do need affordable growth, sustainability. I understand that. So I would suggest, as I've listened, that you break this down a little bit and just slow the process a little bit. Take a look at the existing problems that need fixed, that are very obvious, and move those to the forefront. Take a look at your future plan, works that are in the work right now, and say, how can we, how can we work for these people so that it helps everybody? And then take a hard look at where you're going from there, a new planning. That's just a suggestion. I don't sit on council. That's your job. However, I do speak for the people that live in residential areas, as I do, where many of us are putting up with motels, and that's what I'm calling them, motels, in a single residential area. And I have some pictures here. Another house that is on a dead-end street that's strictly residential. Eleven, over two days, 11 men moved into that house. There is no, it is a two-story house, but there is no separate address to the basement part. It's just a door at the back, a door at the front. 11 vehicles, all with different license plates from Ontario, Alberta, here, there and everywhere. Most, some of them are parked on the front lawn, and some of them are parked in the driveway. And as long as the alley is accessible, they can park there. Last year, that same place and others like it, the cars were jammed up on each side of the street where the snowplow couldn't, the grader couldn't get down the street. So the people living past them had no, had to put up with that, plowing their own part of the street so they could get in and out. There are many of these areas where if there was a major fire, the fire truck couldn't even get down that street. Places, many times where I've watched and I've recorded, where there's so many cars jammed up from this, from this, two houses that were on that street that were motels. Even the fire hydrant had vehicles parked in front of it. Those are things that need to be fixed and fixed now. And I think you can do that by taking, breaking this into parts and working with people that obviously have spent huge money. But we need to address these things quickly. We don't know who these people are. The shifts change every three weeks. Nine cars disappear, nine more cars disappear, reappear, people coming and going. These are residential areas. That home, I assume, pays no more tax than I do, other than maybe the homeowner's grant. It's wrong. Three-quarters of these places that I drive around, I'm hearing from motels and hotels that are only three-quarters full, apartment buildings that are only three-quarters full. As I drive around, I see lots of rental places. So I just ask that you, you don't, when you, when you take a look at this bylaw today, and I don't think you're going to be able to pass the bylaw as it is, by the sounds of it, but I would ask you to take a hard look at some of those things that can be fixed now, bring them to the forefront, give it some meat so you can look after your, you can, you can, you can police your bylaws that you do have in place properly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Wilber?
Mr. Easert, I just want to make clear that when you say motel, you're referring to rooming houses.
Same thing to me.
All right. Thank you. I just, I want to state that in particular, the house that Mr. Easert's talking about, I went and looked at last winter, and there was actually 18 big jacked-up trucks parked in that property last year.
Thank you. Mr. Ferriad, your hand up, you wanted to speak?
Obviously, Duane and Greg have talked a lot. Just take a couple seconds. Good morning, Your Worship, council. As you all know, I was on the committee, and my only objection right now is things like that rooming house is what the committee was formed to deal with, things like parking. I would suggest, and I've talked to a few other committee members, some of them counselors, that the report that came out of that committee has a lot of issues that were never really discussed and put forward by the committee. There's been a lot brought forward that everybody walking around saying, well, this is what the committee came up with, is wrong, I believe. It seems like the urban systems has added a lot to the report. And I know, I've talked with the council, and we were wondering if we were sleeping during some of the meetings because we couldn't figure out where some of the things came from. So I just want to suggest that the items in the committee that were discussed in the committee, and we agree with. We agree that parking is an issue. We agree with the rooming houses. We lost the suites in the duplexes. We fully expected that to happen, and, you know, we can live with that. But the committee never really was there to talk about making lots bigger, and I don't believe we discussed that in the committee. So I just want to suggest that saying that the changes put forward are based on the recommendations of the committee, I'd suggest that's wrong.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions?
Sorry. Yes. Go ahead. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Jody McLean. I live at 95 Avenue. I've been a resident in Dawson Creek since 2005. And for one or two of those years, I was, worked here at the city as your city planner. In that position, I used the zoning bylaw as my primary document, which I was responsible for. I see that good things and there are bad things in there, and some very, some, always have, every bylaw has some quirks in there, just because of the local history. But for these amendments, I see here, I 100% support them. I've gone through all of them, and they all make total sense. The existing zoning bylaw you have right now sets very low minimum requirements. The 300 square meters for a single-family lot, the 10-meter frontage, the 525 square meter for a duplex, though, that's pretty much literally the smallest you can go for a parcel and still fit a house on there. You don't see that anywhere else. You see it in other, exists in other communities as a special, like, small lot zone or a small cabin zone or some of that, but they're not, it's not, it's not the default minimum everywhere in that, any other community. Those minimums, they were set back a couple years ago during a wave of affordable housing revisions with the, and it was meant to enable small lot development, which presumably would create small houses and presumably more affordable housing. And the developers in town here, they did pick up on that, and they did deliver on that. But the prices did not go down, as we've seen. Affordable housing just, it's not that simple. It's more complex than that. You need diversity in housing choices and a bunch of other items to be done at the same time. But regardless, whatever's been developed so far is done, it's developed, and will continue to be there for the next, until it's demolished. This zoning bylaw now that you're going to set is forward-looking, looking, you're setting the regulations, so development's going to happen in the next year, two years, three years, whatever it is. The corporation, the city of Dawson Creek, you guys are going to be here every year for the next fifty to hundred years, dealing with what's being developed right now. Because those houses, they're going to be at their lifespan. I'm not going to be here fifty years from now. These companies are not going to be here fifty years from now. But this city is going to be here, and that's why sustainability is always your number-one lens you want to look at, all these developments through. It's important to adopt this bylaw now so that you're not passing on these social, economic costs onto, to the future residents, creating another few streets that are, these wall-to-wall rooming houses, as the last presenter said. This is, like another presenter said, this is a little bit of a pendulum swing, but it's not, you're not going the other way. You're going towards the middle. This, these revisions here, you're creating something that's more normal than you see in other communities, such as Fort St. John. They have the, they have the requirement that the owner of a suite lives in the house. That's, that's normal. The property sizes you're creating are actually more normal than this very, very minimum. So it's good that we review and revise the regulations every now and then. Dawson Creek's first zoning bylaw came in nineteen forty-nine, and every about ten years, you've gone through and reviewed what the results have been from that wave of development, whatever it's been, and you've made revisions accordingly. In a couple of years more, you're going to be here again revising the zoning in the OCP as you learn what those consequences have been of that wave of development. So I just want to say that I, I think this, the bylaw you have in front of you is the correct, correct way.
Thank you, Jody. Counselor Parslow?
Yeah, I'm not sure if I misheard you. Did you say that it is normal in the province? I assume, I was assuming you were referring to the province for municipalities to require owners of property where there's, you know, duplexes or, or suites to actually live there? Is that, you're saying that's the norm?
Suites, yes.
The suites?
That's, that's more normal. It's, it's done in many municipalities. They can't say all of them, but many municipalities do have that provision.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you for, Counselor McFadden?
Just briefly, so in your view, this bylaw should be passed as written, the way it is on the doc today. No, no tweaking, I think, as somebody said. Is that your view?
Yes. I, I went through mall. From the technical standpoint of somebody enforcing those zoning regulations, I can see where everything's coming from, from the year or two I spent here. I can see a lot of the, a lot where those tweaks are coming from is they're, they're mending things that are a little frustrating to deal with sometimes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jody, for coming this morning. So next, sorry, Mr. Scott, you had your, want to speak?
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Bumstead, and council. My name's Doug Scott. I have a lot of rental property here in Dawson Creek, and I sat on the Residential Development Committee, and I'm here today to offer support for this to pass. There's so many issues that have come up through this, and I noticed that six, seven, eight months ago, I'm not sure of the timeline, but city staff actually went through and did a lot of homework on this and made recommendations. And this already was the potential bylaws that were to be passed seven, eight months ago were, were voted down. And we had this Residential Development Committee because of that. You know, we went through that process. I, I don't think that council really has a, an option in a way, like, I think that we should make sure this goes through today. In my mind, it's, it's quite clear that a duplex should be a duplex. A single-family zoned area should be a single-family zoned area, not, not an area with suites in it. So RS1 should, should remain RS1. If you want to have a suite, go to a RS2 zoning. There's areas for that. So no one's saying you can't have a suite in a house. It just has to be in the right zoning. Let's just make the zoning correct. Duplex is a duplex. A single-family is a single-family. I like everything that Jody said there. The social and economic issues that come down with this sort of density that others would like to see. I don't agree with that. I think that's bad. I wish that more residents in Dawson Creek would have come out and spoke here today because I believe that even though they're not here, I know it's ironic, but most of the residents in Dawson Creek, I don't believe, would want to see our, our neighborhoods mixed up with RS1 being essentially a duplex and duplexes having fourplexes. And, and like Jody said, we got to look long-term. The twenty-year span, or fifty years later, when we're going to have to deal with the social and economic issues of... It's frustrating for me, as everybody, but there's no perfect bylaw, is the other point I'd like to make. There's going to be people in the stands complaining about whatever thing is passed, whatever, whatever bylaw is passed. Anyway, I think I've said my piece. I just think this should pass. I want to offer my support to council, so.
Thank you. Any questions? Thanks for coming this morning. Uh, sorry, did anybody else have their hand up that want to speak?
Good morning, Mr. Bumstead, and council.
Good morning. My name is Rod Graham. I come today as a concerned citizen who's, I used to live in Langley, B.C., and now I'm living up here in Dawson Creek. I was a realtor for Deneers. Worked with lots of investors, worked with lots of people, just average folks buying homes, bought homes that were suited, bought big properties and developed them. And what I'm seeing here today is you're bringing in a bylaw to override another bylaw in an OCP that you had in place that investors were relying on to come to this town and, in good faith, bring out their pocketbook, change their position, change a bunch of investors' positions behind them. And how does this make you look as a small community in a big picture of B.C., trying to go through with all this investment up here, LNG? Now, to me, good faith is a very important thing. Integrity, in my books, is everything. If the wind comes along and starts blowing one way, and that's the way you move, you can't do that. You have to be a rooted tree. You have to be strong in what you believe. That's why you come up with an OCP. Now, if the OCP was flawed, that should have been taken care of way back then, not now. And now you say to the investors, "Well, it's non-conforming. You know, we'll give you that." Well, you've taken away the property rights. That's a huge deal. If somebody came to you and said, "Okay, well, I'm going to get you to invest in this business with me." And then down the road, they said, "Well, you know, we're taking away your shares. You no longer have a right to this business. And what we'll do for you is we'll just buy you out, give you a paltry little sum." Because that's what happens with non-conforming. As a realtor, I would never have allowed somebody that I was trying to sell a piece of property to, to buy a non-conforming right. Because I'd say, you know, "Why would you do that when over here I can give you a conforming right, and you have a strong position in your real estate?" So these things really have to be thought about hard because I've thought of doing some investing up here now, too. And it's, it's really making me take a backseat and thinking, you know, maybe I got to rethink this whole thing. So I would just want to say to council, you know, be very thoughtful and sober in your thinking right now. Because B.C.'s watching, whether you think, whether you think that way or not. There's investors down on the coast, they can go to so many different places, but they see opportunity here. And opportunity is a good thing. It's a good thing for Dawson Creek. It's a good thing for British Columbia. So let's embrace that opportunity. If there are, if there are a few things that are impacting the community with the property rights that have people upset, like, you know, these eighteen trucks in front of a house. I mean, you don't take a, an outlier here, an exception, and make a huge new rule. It's just, it's just not prudent. What you have to do is you have to go, "Okay, well, maybe we have to come up with a, tweak the bylaw and say, 'Well, only, you know, three people are allowed in a three-bedroom home,' or five people, or whatever the number is, whatever makes sense. I'm not here to tell you what to do in that, in that instance." But of course, that has to be dealt with because there's a lot of people that are upset about that. Now, I live up in the Sunset Ridge, Harvest View Townhomes there, and I've been there for six months now, and I quite like it. It's a, it's an excellent development in my mind. Never any proper, you know, parking problems. They've taken care of all that. They were even, when they were paving their whole parking lot for the townhouses, there was not a problem with me getting a parking spot. They did it really well. They were able to meet everybody's needs. And now you go up there, there's parking spaces available everywhere. The place is full. So obviously, they've taken their situation and looked at it all in a very constructive way and have put together something that this community should be proud of. Now, when you change the property rights and you change their whole investment opportunity in the middle of what they're doing, well, that's just going to, it just brings a whole world of hurt to everybody. It's going to reflect on you. It definitely reflects on them. And is that what sober people do? No. People want to go forward. They want to build this community into a community they can be proud of. Well, when you make decisions like that, that's not a proud moment. So basically, you know, spoke my piece. So I just think, as council, this bylaw is not a good bylaw. You have to look at this bylaw and say, "Well, let's put this aside." Well, I'd say, "Quash it." And look at the bylaws that we have in place right now and say, "Okay, how do we deal with these problems? We got to deal with this problem." You make a, you know, you make a change to the bylaw, you got to deal with this problem. But you don't throw the baby at the bathwater. So I guess I've said my piece.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Was there anyone else that wanted to speak?
My name is Paul Jvatkov. There's been a lot of good points brought out here. You know, the, the issue has been covered quite well. But because I've got some history with, during the planning back in the day, I, I thought I'd offer a few comments. We had a meeting here in this room with the Agricultural Land Commission years ago when this planning process got kicked off. And it was to do with getting land taken out of the agricultural land reserve outside of the boundaries for development. I think the, the message was quite strong, and I can remember asking the commission or, or making a comment, that they have the power to force a community to develop vertically. They can absolutely restrict you to stay within your boundaries. So the message was that densification was the flavor of the day. And I think if you look at other municipalities in B.C., densification is from not only, you know, the agricultural land reserve perspective, but for maximizing the, the value of what you have in infrastructure. So that's one point. So the Agricultural Land Commission has a, a lot of influence and a lot of expectation of the communities. The rooming house phenomenon has only developed here since the oil and gas industry kicked off in 2003. And we were warned, we had multiple executives come up from Calgary and warn us about what to expect. And I know that the service companies, the trucking firms, the trades, electrical companies, instrumentation, they're, they're trying to get people to come up here. There's not enough people up here to do the work. There's trucks sitting without drivers. There's equipment sitting without operators. There's work that's going to Alberta or Saskatchewan firms because there's no employees here. So there was a real need for, to attract people here, to attract tradesmen, to attract employees. And they, they had to have a place to live. And I know that a lot of these service companies put ads in the newspaper, you know, "Has anybody got a room? Any, any place where, where one of our employees could move into and live?" As opposed to going to a hotel or, you know, where the expenses are, are higher and it's, it's not a preferred accommodation for a lot of people. So that was sort of the beginning of this rooming house phenomenon. And I think gradually that will, will wane and, and, you know, obviously, it needs to be dealt with because of the parking. I mean, even on our street, we've got a lot of vehicles parked along the street, and we have ditches on our street still. You remember, Hundred and Eighteenth Avenue's got ditches instead of curb and gutter? So it's, it's an issue down there, but I think for the most part, we recognize the, the needs of, of these people that are moving into town. You know, they have to have a place to live. So like I say, I think this will, it'll correct itself over time. As we get new, you know, proper accommodations built, that, there won't be a need for people. Like, I, you know, for twelve people to live in a house, I don't think that's their preferred lifestyle. I think they probably would like to have an affordable place to rent. As far as investors, I think we've got a history here in Dawson Creek of changing the rules midstream. And I think that's the quickest way to kill investment in this community. And that, that scares me because, you know, we're kind of on a roll now. People know about Dawson Creek. They're willing to come here and spend their money, and to change the rules midstream on them, you know, it just does, it's not right. One of the, I, I think it's human nature, and I, I know in my previous life in the Forest Service, when we encounter an issue, a problem, we tend to want to change the world to prevent this problem from happening. this problem from happening. When often, if we just dealt with the specific problem, which could have been pretty minor, it would have been corrected and that was it. But to, to go into a complete new bylaw like this, to deal with the specific issues that I've heard, and really, the only specific issue that I've heard is the parking. You know, as a result of the rooming house situation. So, you know, that's, that's a problem that, you know, you can isolate it and deal with it. You don't have to force me to buy a Volkswagen. You know, my pickup, I've weighed it out here on the scales, it's 6,000 pounds, and it's a half-done pickup. So, you know, is all of a sudden, I'm not going to be allowed to have that? Like, you know, it's just, those kind of things in this bylaw need to be thought through Another thing that was coincidental, I just heard on the radio this morning, B.C. Housing has come out with a report, and there's a crisis with rental rates in the province. And they, they've looked at all the rental rates in different communities and, you know, this, this alone demonstrates the need to have more accommodation. So to have a suite in a, or, or have a duplex with suites in the basement, I think that's, you know, over the long term, is going to reduce the rental rates. And it also gives people that want to have, you know, their parents or somebody live with them, it gives them an opportunity to do that. And those are the, the reasons that this, these were included in the planning, in the planning process to start with. There was, you know, an empathy with the social need for affordable housing, for low income. That's why these suites were approved. And it's still there. I mean, you can look around town, there's lots of people that are making 12 bucks an hour. Not everybody is making, you know, 30 or 40 dollars an hour. So, so that need hasn't gone away. Over time, I think the rental rates will come down. I think we have to have enough construction and development so that, you know, there's adequate accommodation for everybody. And, and once that happens, then, you know, when there's some vacancies, I think that's The other thing I guess, and it was touched on, is, is the, the revenue cost analysis. Like, in this report, was there an analysis of the increased taxes with, for example, the duplexes with suites in them? You know, how much taxes are we getting for those as opposed to a straight duplex? Or a single-family residence? And, and, and based on the amount of land, like, the notion of increasing the size of lots? Like, we live on a 50-foot lot. 50-foot lot is plenty for us. We, we could have a 40-foot lot. We don't want a bunch of maintenance. My wife won't do it. And, and, you know, it's, so, to increase the size of the lots, I, I think is a mistake. I, you know, I think you have to make more, well, it's densification generally.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions? Thank you. Is there any other speakers? So, thank you. Oh, sorry. Mitch? Good morning.
Morning, Mayor and Council. So I just wanted to touch base really quick. I had a, a little bit of an input last time the meeting was, was adjourned. And I wanted to throw it really quickly that we're going to be looking at changing these policies right now, but we're not really sure what the demand fundamentals are. So it's an interesting time right now to look at sweeping reform on density in the city of Dawson, when in literally two weeks, we could have the Site C Dam approved, and in a month's time, we could have LNG approved, and we could literally have thousands of people moving into these towns, both Fort St. John and Dawson Creek. And so I think what needs to happen is there needs to be, you know, some really good thought put into what the long-term implications are if density is reformed to the way that it sits right now in light of massive, massive demand for that housing. And so to go with that, I think what needs to really happen, you know, in talking with a lot of different folks, is to isolate the main issues that this kind of housing is bringing in. And from everything that I've heard, a lot of the time, that comes down to parking, which we've heard repeatedly today, snow clearing and snow storage. I think those are the major issues that I've been made aware of as far as housing goes. And with a lot of the property that I've been involved in with the development and sales of, we've focused a lot more on single-family homes with secondary suites because they do allow adequate parking and places to snow, I'm sorry, to store the snow, which gets rid of a lot of the issues that brought us to this place in the, in the first spot. So right now, if we, you know, totally made the changes that are on the table right now, it's going to really, really slow down the investment coming into town. It's going to make it harder and harder for employers to bring in and find places to live that are suitable for their new employees. And, you know, it, it's, it's a, it's a challenging time to do that in light of what could be coming down in the very, very short term. The other thing I wanted to put out is I've been involved with a lot of investors. I own currently a lot of real estate personally in both Fort St. John and Dawson Creek. And if anything does change, let's say the bylaw does get moved forward, I think there should be some special consideration to people that have bought under the old bylaws. With things being nonconforming, it can, it can have a drastic impact on people's mortgage rates, their ability to resell the real estate that they've already bought in, in Dawson Creek and in Fort St. John for that matter. And I think that, you know, when people do invest their, their dollars, and I've worked with a lot of local folks that have purchased up here as well, we need to give a lot of consideration that if bylaws are changed, that, you know, they're affected to the least amount possible for existing homes that were allowed under the current bylaws. So what I would throw out is, you know, I think everybody should, first off, consider very carefully if it makes sense to adopt a bylaw today, given that we could have massive, massive demand changing in the next two to three weeks. And take a look at the issues, isolate them, and, you know, maybe consider single-family homes with suites as a viable option long-term for investment in Dawson Creek. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. So I think that gets us to, through the folks that had asked to speak. Obviously, the public hearing process is exactly what took place today, is an opportunity for people to have their input into the proposed changes and a proposed zoning amendment bylaw that can impact our community and each one of the folks that have made the commitment into our community and our citizens. And so it absolutely is the right process for us as council to be able to consider and hear and understand the issues that we consider when we make a change. This zoning amendment bylaw, and we've had some conversation about it, is the most probably, not probably, is the most significant decision a council will make, in my view, in terms of guiding the future of our community, as we've heard this morning. You know, and I want to give some context to people who aren't here today also, as, just a little bit in terms of what this council has done over the last year to try to ensure that we guide that process, to ensure that we gauge and get the information from the folks who are impacted in this community and directly. So last fall, I'm going to say October, November, we sent out a letter to every investor, every developer, every contractor, every Realtor that was doing business in Dawson Creek last fall, and invited them to come and meet with us individually. And Blaine Nicholson talked about it. So we could have that conversation, we could have that dialogue, and we could get that information from the folks who were impacted by it to understand, we're a governance board. That's what we do. We set policy. We set the policy in terms of how the impacts of our community are guided. And the policy in regards to the zoning amendment bylaw is exactly that, in my view. So our conversations that we had last year, and we sat with, I'm going to say, 12 to 14 different people who responded to that invitation. Council took the time. I think without exception, and administration, we met individually with everybody that was impacted and responded to that request so we could get the information in terms of understanding what's working, what's impacting our community, what's affecting the development, what's working, what isn't working? What should we be aware of in terms of how the development of our community is taking place? Because we're, in my view, we're on the railroad tracks of the tsunami of activity that's coming. And obviously, the majority of the investors that are in this community today are here recognizing that opportunity. And that's why Dawson Creek and Fort St. John are number three and four in the province in terms of being the top communities in the province as investment opportunities. So we were concerned about that. And that's what drove, really, the result of those interactions, those discussions, brought us forward to April, I think, when we proposed the bylaw at that time for some of the changes. And that process was defeated, that bylaw, which drove us to the next step of council wanting to have the residential development committee in terms of understanding, how can we engage this at a further level so that we make sure we move it forward in a proactive process to understand this impact? So we have taken it very seriously, and I don't, and I know that people here have recognized that in terms of council's willingness to deal with it. We've been dealing with it for a year. And so to me, this process today was one more step in that direction for us of not looking for perfection, but move the bar higher, progress. That's what we need to ensure we do. And so from that view, I really appreciate sincerely the impact, the input, and the discussion and conversation we've had today with everybody who's brought forward the issues, concerns, because it helps us make a better, more informed decision for the benefit of our community. And that's what we're concerned with. I speak for myself personally, as a fourth-generation Dawson Creek'er. I'm concerned about the next, what this community looks like in 40 or 50 years. And investment is important to help us guide that. So I don't want in any way minimize what's been said today about the impact of that. So I sincerely appreciate it and sincerely say that on behalf of council, that we do recognize the importance of this decision, and we don't take it lightly. So council, has that closed the public hearing now? Thank you. We appreciate people's attending this morning. Jim?
You probably want to take about 10-minute break here because I imagine the media would like to speak to some of the folks who presented.
Thank you. So we'll adjourn to public hearing. Excuse me, I'm going to call us back to order, please. Can I call us back to order, please?
The council's left you.
They'll be back. So we're going to call ourselves back to order. We have Quorum in the room, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. We have, first, I'm going to vary the agenda, and we're going to go to our delegations because we have, or, sorry, I want to get to our, yeah, sorry, delegations. And our first delegation, under item 6.1, we have Catherine Charbonneau, Gloria Cleve, and Michelle Mobley, early childhood educators at B.C. in attendance during National Child Day. Are they here?
Yeah.
I believe Brenda just went to get them.
Good morning. How are you guys?
Where's the figures on the usage? Duncan was going to get figures on the usage.
Good morning. How are you guys?
For National Child Day?
Thank you for coming. So it's my pleasure this morning to read a proclamation. Whereas on March 19th, 1993, the Government of Canada proclaimed November 20th as National Child Day to commemorate two historic events for children. The adoption of the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of the Child in 1959, and the U.N. adoption of the Convention of the Rights of the Child in 1989. And whereas, it is a day to remember that children need love and respect to grow to their full potential. And whereas, it is a day to marvel at their uniqueness and all they have to offer. And whereas, it is a day to celebrate the family and, and think about how adults affect the development of children close to them. And whereas, this year, National Child Day celebrates children, have the right to learn about and enjoy their own culture. And whereas, many individuals, organizations, and municipalities throughout British Columbia have since 1993 organized events in celebration of National Child Day, now therefore, I do hereby proclaim November 20th as National Child Day in Dawson Creek. Thank you so much for coming this morning.
So to celebrate National Child Day, we're actually not going to do it on the day of, we decided to do it on November 24th, which is a non-instructional day. And by the way, I'm Catherine Charbonneau, I'm with the Childcare Resource Department. So on the Success Six Committee, we've all together as our committee, decided also to collaborate and put on our first early years festival. And we will be doing it at the Tremblay Elementary School, in the gym, and then also using the Star Start Munchkin Room. And so we're going to be having Kiki, the Ego Alf, our children's entertainer, from the Open Army, to come up, and she'll do concerts with the children, and also have lots of different activities for the children, craft, and lots of loose parts played in stations. Then I'm also going to be having different professionals from Mobile Northern Health and the Child Development Center to do kind of screening for children, it's called Ages and Stages Questionnaire. What it is, is to, um, parent their children, so they can go through that and see where the child's strengths are, or if they need to work anything on in their development, then they'll be given different tests or different activities that they can do if they're children at home. So, yeah. I have posters as well here, thought I'd hand them out, if you wanted to take one and pass it on.
Sure.
And then I have little handles, if you wanted to take a few, and as you're talking to people, please give them to people who would want to come to our event, so it's a very exciting event. Also, on the day of, we're launching our Family Friendly Community website. It's exciting. It's a one-stop shop for people from the community to go see what's happening, and I'll let Michelle talk about it. So in honor of National Child Days, Catherine is my speaker. We, the Success Six Children First Table, are proud to announce that we are now part of the Northeastern B.C. Family Friendly Initiative. To follow up with our participation with familyfriendlycommunity.ca, familyfriendlycommunity.ca, we're also going to be rolling out the Family Friendly Business Toolkit in the near. And this is a process where businesses are evaluated in order to determine whether or not they are family-friendly. We're holding our official familyfriendly.ca launch at the Early Years Festival at Tremblay School, November 24th. And Mayor and Council are certainly, will keep enjoying us in celebrating National Child Day and help us promote Dawson Creek as a family-friendly community.
Thank you so much.
And then I just have one quick announcement. I'm Gloria Cleve, with School District 59. I came to speak to City Council a few years ago and, and had the grim news at that time that child vulnerability rates, the, the rate at which a child is ready to succeed when they enter the kindergarten door, that rate, we were the lowest in the province at that time. I'm really pleased to say that the work of this table, that what we do, and with the support of the community, we now have come to a point, it's still awful, it's still three in 10 children aren't ready to succeed when they need kindergarten, get to the kindergarten door. But we are on par with the rest of the province. We aren't, we aren't the worst anymore. And so we are doing something right.
Thank you so much for coming this morning.
Thanks for having us.
And we had a letter included in that request. Do we want to deal with that now?
No.
Not in the presence of the delegation, Your Worship.
Thank you.
Back under Mayor's business?
All right. Item 6.2, we have Arden Smith, Sandy Ash, Jane Harper, Sherry Gunn, Lauren Geno, Rosalyn Guest, South Peace Community Resources Society in attendance regarding the proclamation of the National Day of Remembrance and Action on Violence Against Women. of the National Day of Remembrance and Action on Violence Against Women.
Welcome. Welcome. Good morning. Come on, please. Good morning. So it's welcome. It's my pleasure to read this proclamation this morning. Whereas on December 6th, 1989, fourteen women died as a result of a massacre at Epolet technique in Montreal. And whereas, this tragical occurrence reflects the pervasive violence against women in our society. And whereas, we gather on this day to pay honor to and remember women who have been victims of violence. And whereas, all citizens have a role and obligation to promote a safe environment for women in our city. And whereas, we stand in support of all women who experience violence. And whereas, we want to prevent violence from happening in the first place. And whereas, through our individual and collective actions, we can make a difference. Now therefore, I do hereby proclaim the day of December 6th, 2014, as National Day of Remembrance and Action on Violence Against Women. So thank you so much for coming this morning and giving us an opportunity to reflect on a tragic day in May in history. I'll leave that to you guys to speak on.
Well, this is the 25th anniversary of the murders in Montreal. And this year, we're changing things up a little bit. We usually have a candlelight vigil from NAR Park to the United Church where we have a service, but we often have thirty below weather when we're doing that. So this year, we decided we could just have the church service. We're running it sort of like a remembrance day for the women that have been killed in Canada and in B.C. in particular. The number of women who have been murdered by their intimate partner has tripled in the last year. There were fifteen-ish so far this year. Last year, there were only five. So it's not getting better, it's actually getting worse. So this year, we're running it like a remembrance day, but not for veterans of war, but for women who have been killed in their own homes by their intimate partners, as well as on the streets, et cetera, sex trade workers, et cetera. So we're asking groups to come, and we're, on a remembrance day on November 11th, you would lay a wreath, we're asking people as a group to come and light a candle. And that's at seven o'clock on December 6th, at South Peace United Church. So it would be really nice to see people come out. You don't have to walk in the cold this year. You can just come into the warm church.
Thank you so much for coming this morning. I appreciate it.
Next, delegation 6.3, we have Caitlin Treble from the Dawson Creek Community Choirs in attendance regarding an information or request for support for the Dawson Creek Community Choirs. Good morning. Welcome.
All right. Thank you for having me. I just wanted to come to council to let you know a little bit of what I've been doing in town in terms of music education. I grew up in Dawson Creek in September, and in September 2013, my son and I returned to live and work here after living in Alberta for six years. Since last September, I've been teaching private voice lessons to children and adults through both K-PAC and independently. And I worked as a vocal coach in the South Peace production of Shrek the Musical last year. This past summer, myself and two colleagues from Edmonton started a group called Dawson Creek Music Explorers, where we ran a week-long music camp for kids through South Peace, or Saint Mark's Anglican Church. We had nineteen kids registered for our camp, and through donations and good enrollment, we'll be able to expand in 2015 to accommodate children from out of town, and as well as offer two camps instead of just one. So it was really successful. The three of us have also been active performers in Dawson Creek, with classical music concerts in July and October, and the next one scheduled for February. I'm in the final stages of completing my master's degree in music through the University of Alberta, and I'm also a registered music teacher through the National Association of Teachers of Singing and the Grand Prairie Music Teachers Association. I'm also a member of the B.C. Choral Federation. So in September of this year, I developed three different community choirs, which operate out of K-PAC. With myself, a co-director, and two pianists that help, we have a children's choir for kids grades two to seven, a youth choir for grades eight to twelve, and an adult choir, or community choir for anyone sixteen and up. Our choirs draw students from many of the local schools, including some home-schooled children. There are no auditions, and membership fees are kept as low as possible to encourage participation. The choral opportunities, or opportunities for singing in a choir, have been going down fairly steadily over the last number of years, with the Kiwanis Kids Choir disbanding and with the Dawson Creek Symphony and Choir ending their thirty-year run in 2006. Enrollment in our choirs since September has been actually really encouraging. We have thirty-one students in our kids choir, twelve youth, and nineteen adults. That's sixty-two people who rehearse at the Calvin Crook Center on a weekly basis. You'll get a chance to hear a bit of what we've been doing at the Christmas Tree Light Up this Friday, and at our concerts at the Arts Center on December 19th and December 20th, all at the Arts Center. We're also taking our groups to South Peace United Church on December 5th, and to Rotary Manor on December 10th to entertain the residents there. What I'm asking of the city council is to support these community choirs. I have personally funded the immediate overhead costs for starting the groups, but there are some capital investments that I'm not able to provide for my choirs at this time without external support. In order to have optimal sound and visual qualities in our performances, and to comply with Canadian copyright laws, we need to purchase choral risers, music folders, and enough original copies of the music that we perform, so that we're covering our bases in terms of copyright. It would also be beneficial to eventually invest in a band shell, but at this point, that's more of a want rather than a need, and it's probably easy enough to build it rather than buy it. In order to accommodate our current numbers, we need three-tiered risers. And I've searched out quotes from a Canadian company based in Saskatchewan. So three of these risers would cost, including shipping, $3,198.83. I can drop off the quote that I've been provided at the registration. Music folders cost about $10 to $15 apiece, so we're looking at an investment of about $300 to $450 for those. We'll also be able to spend, or we need to spend about $800 per term on music, due to the fact that we have no existing library, because we're new. To break that down, each song we perform with enough copies would cost around $30 to $40. Now, we are able to borrow music through the B.C. Choral Federation and the Canadian Music Center, but performance rights, we still need to buy those. After we have all these things, risers and folders and a basic music collection, we will be self-sustainable through membership fees and ticket sales. We're just spread too thin right now. I understand that council will be working on the municipal budget in significant detail over the next few months, and that there are already concerns about fiscal spending, since a number of groups seeking help far exceeds available funds to do so. I also understand that further investments with any association to the Calvin Crook Center are controversial. However, I hope that you consider that this choral program is providing positive learning opportunities for children and teenagers, and a constructive social environment for all members. Choirs not only build musical and artistic skills, but also teach the value of listening and collaboration, communication in a group setting. My groups also generate additional income for K-PAC. So basically, what I'm asking for is anything that the city might be able to allocate, even a little would go a long way, a couple of hundred dollars or whatever, would make a difference between having battered, shabby-looking duetangs and nice folders for our concerts. If not financial help that is possible, then even just access to the city's leisure guides or city promotion would be really important for our events and our recruitment. And of course, personal support from mayor and council through attendance at our concerts, even just word of mouth that we exist would be great. So I'm open to any questions about what I'm doing and suggestions for how to go about doing this better. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there any question? Counselor Schuman?
I don't have a question, but Caitlin, thank you so much for coming back to Dawson Creek and bringing your knowledge and your passion for this to our community, and I'm so happy that you're busy at our Performing Arts Center.
Yeah, very busy.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Parslow?
Yes, I echo what Counselor Schuman just said. One of the losses in the community was when Mel Florellin's group was
Yeah, at the college.
negatively affected by college decisions, which was in turn was precipitated by provincial funding. Have you been to any other groups requesting support?
Not yet. This is the first of my efforts.
I would strongly suggest you do that, because I know of a number of groups who I think would just jump at the opportunity of supporting this, particularly as it involves young people.
Right, yes.
So I can give you some names privately, and this is something we really needed in the community. It was a great loss, and I'm glad you're reinstating it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions? So, thank you, because I echo these. I think it's amazing that you're volunteering to bring that back to our community. I love the fact that you're volunteering your time to bring that into our community. So I will write you a check for $500 for your folders.
Wow, thank you.
Because you're not going to do Christmas concerts here without folders.
Okay, thank you.
So thank you.
That's amazing.
And we'll bring it back under mayor's business.
Wow, thank you so much.
Thanks for coming this morning.
Okay, thank you.
Brenda Kreitzer and Mona McNally, Step Up &amp; Ride. Are they here this morning for?
I saw them.
Good. Yep, they're here.
It's very nice you did. It's well good.
Good morning.
Here we are again.
We love you.
Good, we love you too.
Thanks for coming this morning.
Okay, we're here on behalf of Step Up &amp; Ride. And I'm not going to go into Step Up &amp; Ride, because everybody knows what Step Up &amp; Ride is.
Is there anybody who doesn't?
If there is any information you want to know about Step Up &amp; Ride, Mona's here, she can answer it. We know that it is a valuable service in Dawson Creek and much-needed. So what we're here for is that there is a hockey tournament that is going to be put on for us as a fundraiser. And as you know, if we can get two, a couple of big fundraisers a year for Step Up &amp; Ride, that would make a huge, huge difference in keeping Step Up &amp; Ride going. So this hockey team has decided that they would like to do a big fundraiser for us. And so they will, they will be doing this on December 27th, and it will be the only hockey game through the, you know, the holiday season. So they're going to do ticket sales, will, fifty-fifty draws will go to us, and the draw will be played on the evening of December 27th. And here is, she gave me a thing on the hockey game, the Tracker Flyers alumni will be joined by the current Tracker team members to play a blended junior B, Dawson Creek Junior Canucks, and Fort St. John Huskies. Our newest Adams, Autumn, Adams?
Adams.
Girls teams will also be featured during the evening. The Tracker banner will be displayed at the Kin Arena. Team-winning photos will be displayed at the Memorial Arena, and this will be the only hockey game held over the holidays. Tickets will be $10 for adults, $5 for children, twelve and under, with all proceeds going to Step Up &amp; Ride for this evening event. And there will be further information coming up through the next couple of months. So because Step Up &amp; Ride will be receiving the funding from the Flyer-Tracker's hockey game scheduled as a fundraiser event on December 27th, we would like to ask mayor and council for their support in reducing the cost of the ice rental for the Memorial Arena for the evening event by reducing the charge to the minimum necessary to cover staff wages. Or if you're feeling really, really nice, you could just waiver the whole thing. So that's what we're here for, is just for your support in doing this, for a, hopefully a big fundraiser for Step Up &amp; Ride.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you so much. So we'll bring that back under mayor's business and deal with the request at that time. Thanks for coming.
Good, thank you.
Next up, item 6.5, we have Mike Goslin, President of Environmental Operator Certification Program, is in attendance to present an award.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thanks for coming. Thank you. Good morning, buddy. So this, I'm going to let you guys pick a floor and present and introduce the topic.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your time this morning. Appreciate it. A little bit of background, my name is Mike Goslin, I'm the president and CEO of the Environmental Operator Certification Program. Excuse me, I'm the tail end of a cold here. I cough and sputter a little bit, I apologize. The EOCPU is established as a government agent to classify water and wastewater facilities and to certify the operators that work in those facilities. Operator certification is achieved by hands-on experience coupled with educational knowledge. That hands-on experience and educational knowledge is then vetted by examination. Supportive bodies such as this council enable operators to achieve the professional goals, and all of them excel in their efforts to protect public health and the environment. These guys are the frontline boots on the ground. EOCPU established an Operator of the Year Award to recognize operators who promote, improve, and advance certification, raise the profile of operators, and increase awareness in the industry. 2014 EOCPU Operator of the Year Award is going to John Calhoun. John is Water Resource Management Chief Operator at the City of Dawson Creek. John currently holds Water Treatment Level Four, Water Dissection Level Four, Wastewater Treatment Level Two, and Wastewater Collection Level Two certifications. I'd like to just take a second and read what John's peer wrote. "John consistently goes the extra mile, not only to succeed in his role, but to help those under his supervision fulfill their goals. John continues to play an avid, kissy role for the health of his surrounding waters shared through public tours, education awareness campaigns, as well as presentations to council. Not only is John consistently looking to advance his knowledge through additional certifications, I have also known many personnel under John's direct supervision who have valued his leadership and supported management techniques to help them fulfill their goals. This often included John encouraging those employees to seek further certifications or gain experience in different roles through other water systems. At this time, the EOCPU would like to congratulate John for his demonstrated passion and commitment to the industry, and for his continued support of the EOCPU operators." Anyway, I just got a quick speech here. Read it up over the weekend, so it's relatively quick, but just a thanks to everybody. So, good morning, everybody. For those who don't know me, I'm John Calhoun, I've been with the City of Dawson Creek for three years. I'm extremely honored to be receiving such an award, the Operator of the Year, for EOCPU. As much as I appreciate the award, as grateful as I am, the greatest reward that I've been given is the simple opportunity to do what I'm cautioned about, working in the water resource and environmental discipline. I am earnestly grateful for the recognition that has allowed me to receive the award, as I am sure there are many operators who are capable of receiving the award this year. I have faced several challenges throughout my career, with each strengthening me to make the person I am today. I'm a thorough professional who knows exactly what he wants, someone who sets goals that are attainable and whose results drive. This award could not be achieved without the inspiration I receive from my peers and colleagues. For whom I have deep respect for, and whom I derive the strength to challenge myself and perform better at each stage throughout my career. I sincerely thank every one of you, mayor, council, both of my senior managers, Sean Dolan and Kevin Henderson, who are here today, and most of all, the operators who I collaborate and work with every day, and everyone else who has helped, supported me. There are too many on the list, but I thank every one of you. I'm going to continue to better myself and my works to continue to excel into my profession. Thanks again to the City of Dawson Creek, my past and current members, and most importantly, staff, which makes the City of Dawson Creek a great place and helping fire the water."
When we got the notice that John had been receiving this award, and he indicated as well, he really wanted to have this happen in Dawson Creek today, to receive the award, and we really appreciate you coming to town and being able to do that, and council.
and we really appreciate you coming to town and being able to do that in council and in front of the community today. They, you know, we take some things for granted in terms of what we do every day as a community and as a city, in terms of we talk about quality infrastructure and services and things. To me, one of the foundational things that we expect as a community is healthy, quality water. And, you know, we never think about that. We turn that tap on, and we assume that it's going to be safe, quality for our families. And, you know, to me, this is an example of how we have within the community, within our city, an employee who's got the passion to make sure that happens every day. So, I just really appreciate the fact that we have John in the ranks of our community and our city as an employee who has that diligence about his responsibilities and accountability. We're just thrilled that he's been nominated and awarded this on behalf of the certification. So, thanks very much for coming. Thank you. And you know you can't come to your house without getting a picture. Congratulations.
Really good.
Item 66, we have Mr. Abraham Kochn, owner of Golden Cabs, in attendance regarding request from the taxi bylaw.
Morning, thank you. My name's Abraham Kochn. I'm from Golden Cabs. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, city councilors, newer ones, returning ones, and whoever, I forget, good morning. I'm the owner of Golden Cabs, and we've been operating in Dawson Creek. Excuse me, what's my time limit, five minutes, 10 minutes?
10.
Okay, thank you. We've been operating in Dawson Creek since 2011, April, and we bring in a business plan which is to have our logos and color scheme and all of that, and we've been having a hard time those past three years, and I have to come to the city council to see if we can revisit the bylaw, tax bylaw, and that is, our color is gold and red, maroon, burgundy. And the reason we paint cars, it's two reasons. Some companies, they want to be different than anybody else, and also, most of the cities required to have a specific color in your company, whether it's red, or white, or gold, whichever color you choose. And I thought it was another company here before we came in, and we thought that company has a color its own, and we find out that company uses any color they can find it. And we're having problems now where somebody left from our company and went to the other company and keep our color. And now, it's a public confusion issue. It's beyond our problem now. The public are calling and saying, "One of your drivers took me from here to there. I lost my cellphone, I lost my passport, I lost some documents." And we can't track that individual down, and it's the other company. And I guess we don't want to mic somebody else. We want to be separate and unique color. I'm asking the city council to revisit that bylaw and make each company to choose their own color. And I had an incident where that driver who left from us went to yellow and keep the color, and also our decalists for three weeks. I called the RCMB, they said, "There's nothing we can do." I talked to Gladys, who was the police officer at that time, and she said, "The bylaw is not there to enforce. This individual, to remove your decalist or logos, whatever the name is." And we hear as a rumor that individual was picking up people from the streets because it has the name, has a top light meter and the radio, and its owner, operator, I can't do anything to involve his car. When I called the RCMB, they say, "If you involve or touch that car, it's, you're violating somebody's property." I'm all over the place, I'm nervous, I have all choice, I don't know if I make my point.
You are.
But the point is to please revisit that bylaw. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Any questions? Counselor Parslow.
Yes, no, you're coming across loud and clear, Abraham.
Thank you.
So, I'm, just so I grab hold of this topic completely, Section 18 under the bylaw reads that every owner of a taxi cab shall have painted or permanently affixed on either the rear or front door on each side of such taxi cab a business name. Such name shall be printed in lettering not less than two inches high and shall be kept clear, clean, and distinguishable at all times. You are suggesting that that section needs to be amended so that there is a distinctive color design for the vehicles?
Yes, and it doesn't
Different one for different company?
Yes.
Okay.
And also, it doesn't say in that point where if a person doesn't affiliate with a company, should remove the logo and the decalist on that unit within a certain time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you so much. We appreciate you coming in this morning. We will bring it back under Mayor's business.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, we're going to go back now into our agenda, and Item 2 is new counselor business. Counselor Malkinson.
Your worship, I'm wondering for the benefit of those in the gallery right now whether or not we ought to consider the matter that was subject to the public hearing this morning? Any thoughts?
That we dealt with the public hearing?
Yeah.
No, we'll bring it through under our regular business.
Okay, okay.
Any other new counselor business? Minutes, through the minutes of our regular meeting of November 3rd for adoption, Counselor McFadden, seconded Counselor Wilbur. Any errors or omissions in the minutes? All those, sorry, Counselor Malkinson.
Oh, sorry, sorry. It is an error in the minutes, but I'll follow it up with staff a little
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried, thank you. Any business arising out of the minutes? Correspondence, Item 51. We have a letter from Kathy Alrick, CEO of Northern Health. Counselor Schuman?
I've got for information.
Received for information, seconded Counselor Kenny. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried, thank you. Item 52, we have a letter from Dale Campbell, Miles Zero Park Society President, regarding a splash park at Rotary Lake. Counselor Malkinson.
I know that there's a lot of particulars here that need to be worked out, but I think this is an exciting letter to receive from the society, and I think agreeing in principle would be an appropriate step barring anything that, barring any other unforeseen circumstances.
So, I'm going to just jump in because there's some components around here that we really need to deal with as it relates to the operation and impact of Rotary Lake and how it's grandfathered into, under a public facility. And so, I'd really like to make sure that we understand that component with and on behalf of the Miles Zero Park Society and the users, so that we make sure we don't have any influence in terms of if we give them the okay to proceed with it, that we understand the implications. And so, I'd really like to refer back to administration through to Counselor Parslow so that we can get a report on understanding those implications of it, so that we make sure that we flow that, that's a kind of a literal term, wasn't it?
It's very good, very good.
Flow, so that we make sure that we have that understanding of the future of the Rotary Lake as it relates to any development that may occur with the splash park. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah? Counselor Parslow?
So, if I could sprinkle on your comments a little bit?
Absolutely.
Is that okay?
Yeah. The tap of yours.
The, I share your enthusiasm for a splash park, but I have had some discussions with Dale Campbell, relevant to some recent email information that I have received and I think you've received. And I intend raising this at the next Miles Zero Park Society, because I don't think there's a clear enough understanding of some of the technical obligations here, and, but I would suggest that they be placed on a council agenda relevant to reflect your sentiments in about a month's time.
So, if we can just get a motion to refer, refer it back to administration? Well, I think Counselor Parslow is suggesting that he will take this in hand with the board.
Yeah, I'll suggest in January sometime.
And then, the matter could come back to you on December 15th. Perfect, all right.
I would suggest, if I may have said a month, maybe a January meeting, because the time of the year, and Dale is not back until the end of this month, and I'm just wondering, so just, at least by the mid, by mid-January.
Thank you. So, moved by Counselor Parslow, seconded Counselor Wilbur. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried, thank you. Now, we have a letter from Dale Rose, from Senator Rosebone and Grindel regarding our interim audit. Counselor Malkinson?
Moving for information, your worship.
Thank you. Seconded Counselor Schuman. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried, thank you. So, we dealt with our delegations through Item 6, so we'll move to Item 7, our report, 7-1. We have a report from the Chief Financial Officer in regards to our preview role assessment information. Counselor Parslow?
I move the report number 14-227 from the Chief Financial Officer. Read 2015 Preview Role Assessment Report. Be received for information.
Thank you. Seconded Counselor Schuman. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Report 14-229 from the CFO regarding our consolidated budget variance report. Counselor Schuman, seconded, oh, sorry.
Yeah, so I'll move report number 14-229 from the Chief Financial Officer regarding the September 30th, 2014 Consolidated Budget Variance Report. Be received for information.
Thank you. Seconded Counselor Kenny. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried, thank you.
I know you're in a hurry.
No, I'm not. Report 7-3, we have a report 14-236 from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding our fee-for-service policy. Counselor Parslow?
I move the report number 14-236 from the Director of Corporate Administration. Fee-for-service policy be received. Further, the policy be amended to remove the beautification committee fee and to add the South Peace Historical Society as shown within the policy revision attached to this report.
Thank you. Seconded Counselor Wilbur. Discussion? Counselor Wilbur?
As sad as it is, I just wanted to say again, thank you to the beautification committee for all their years of service.
Yeah.
We're sad to see them go, but they've done us good duty.
Done an amazing amount of work for the community. Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried, thank you. 7-4, we have a request from Corporate Administration regarding a busing request for Christmas. Counselor Wilbur?
Sure, I'll make the motion. That report number 14-231 from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding the free busing request. Christmas in Dawson Creek be received. Further, that there are requests for free transit from November 22nd to 28th, 2014, resulting in lost revenue of approximately $1,600 be approved.
Thank you. Seconded Counselor Schuman. Discussion?
Duncan and I look really good in that picture.
I thought you looked amazing. Counselor Parslow?
Is there any evidence that can be presented that this sort of gesture has any impact on the retail business at Christmas time? It seems, I haven't seen any evidence, and so I can't support this.
Thank you. I don't know if that was a question through to administration? Through your worship, there is no report off on the number of riders from last year. Last year, it was branded as idle-less week.
That's true.
And it was meant to encourage moving folks out of their vehicles into transit, but I have no figures on how many people rode the bus last year. Thank you. Does that answer the question?
Yes, no, it does. There's no evidence.
Thank you. Now, any further questions? Counselor Malkinson?
Counselor Parslow's comments, I don't think I'll be voting in favor this, your worship.
Thank you. Any further questions? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Do you want those recorded?
Yes, please.
Yep, thank you. Item 7-5, we have a report number 14-233 from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding our animal control agreement. Counselor Schuman?
I move report number 14-233 from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding the animal responsibility agreement. SPCA be received. Further, that the three-year contract with the BCSPCA be approved beginning on December 1st, 2014, and ending on November 30th, 2017, with the annual payment set at $140,000.
Thank you. Seconded Counselor Malkinson. Discussion? Counselor Wilbur?
I just, I note in the report that there doesn't seem to be funding that comes forward from Puscoopy, Tumblr, Chetwind, and the Peace River Regional District. So, we're paying for that service. Our taxpayers are paying for this service for the entire, looks to me, South Peace, and I'm wondering how we could encourage those other areas to also support the BCSPCA if they would like to have that service. I'm not sure why our taxpayers should, you know, give a 38.5% increase for service to other areas when they contribute nothing.
Thank you. Counselor Malkinson?
Well, I was going to speak along those lines, perhaps not in the exact same way, your worship. I'll quote from the, firstly, I'd like to thank staff for the report. I think that there's some good work that went into it to try to outline some of the issues as they've developed with the SPCA. But I did want to read a sentence from the report that I think we may benefit from in considering this. The estimated income from licensing and impound fees of $25,000, Ms. Davis, the head of the SPCA in this region, feels that an annual payment of $140,000 will be more in line with the service that is provided to the citizens of Dawson Creek. So, I think the recommendation as we see is about compensating the SPCA for the services that we receive, but I do think there is an underlying issue about the SPCA providing services for Dawson Creek, Puscoopy, Tumblridge, and Electoral Areas D and E
Chetwind.
that really, really does need to be addressed. You know, there are some great gaps in the funding that the SPCA receives right now, and I think those need to be addressed.
Thank you. Counselor Parslow?
Well, on the same line, I mean, I think we should pay our share, but provided that the other municipalities that benefit this pay their share, and otherwise, we are subsidizing. I see it as a form of subsidy to other. So, I like the formula, I like the fact that she's saying that our, the caseload that she deals with is, the proportionality would generate these other dollars. So, can staff tell us, does Tumblridge pay for this? Does the regional district zones pay for this, Puscoopy?
Through your worship, our understanding is none of the other local government jurisdictions are currently paying, which means that a combination of fundraising and contributions from the provincial body are paying for those services. So, that may be annoying to you folk because you're paying your way. That in no way changes your alternatives. If you don't pay your own way, the service goes away. At some point in time, the SPCA may withdraw those services in the other communities, but they certainly can't continue to have animal control officer, a vehicle, and a pound for our animals, which still are about 60% of their traffic, without the fees from the City of Dawson Creek. So, although it may be annoying to you, I don't know that it's relevant to your decision. Thank you. Counselor Schuman?
Yeah, so I'm absolutely in favor of this annual payment of $140,000. And just to note, in the North Peace, the area, rural areas up there do contribute to the SPCA in the North Peace. And I know around the table at the regional district, this has come up, and to no avail. I think that we need to work on that a little bit more and see some contribution from those areas towards our SPCA. But this is a really necessary service in this community, and we can't just say we're not going to give them what they need because the other areas aren't. So, I'm in favor of this, and I think we need to work on those other areas to put a little bit in the pot towards this service.
Thank you. Counselor Malkinson?
I'm just, I, thank you, Counselor Schuman, for your words there. I'm just wondering, do you think the advocacy support is there? Do you think us sending a letter to all these municipalities, you know, outlining this issue might yield some results or any further action?
I think that Mayor Bumstead could probably approach this at the regional district level in the future.
Thank you. Counselor Wilbur?
Yeah, by no means am I saying that I don't support our SPCA. I do, and I do think they should have the funding, but I do think that we need to send a very friendly but strong letter to these other communities saying strong letter to these other communities, saying, "You are being provided a service that you're not paying for." And not just the regional district. I think Chatwind, Tumblr Ridge, and Poo Scoopy as well, and I'm sure the SPCA could provide us with the information of what service they are provided, what percentage, and I think they need to be made aware of that. I think they should be contributing to this worthwhile service.
Thank you. Council McFadden?
Well, I see Wendy was, oh, there she, I suppose, aside from ethically, you could cut off service to the rural area in Chatwind, although you may not feel comfortable doing that when somebody calls for help for a critter. But could you just say to Tumblr and the rural, say, "Well, sorry, we're not, we're not coming out there anymore"?
That'll be something I would need to discuss with our provincial office and what the SPCA represents. Like you said, ethically.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Turn away an animal and leave.
I understand that, right, and I agree with you.
It's certainly a concern.
Yeah. But this is not the Dawson Creek SPCA. It's the South Peace branch, so South Peace, in my mind, should include, but I hear what you're saying, and I appreciate that position. It's difficult, but that's the way it is. Thank you.
Council Parslow?
Yes, I think we have to look after the interests of the city. I reluctantly will support this. But this reminds me that the regional district doesn't pay its way to the city for some other major ticket items, and I think we need to get, this needs to be upfront center in the media and politically, because we, this is just not right, that the regional district doesn't support us in many ways. They do in other ways, but not in all ways, and I think we should really show our disgust with this. And I'm amazed why Poo Scoopy and Tumblr Ridge wouldn't be paying towards it if they're getting services. But I will reluctantly support it because I don't want the chaos that would ensue to the SPCA trying to deliver its services here without this funding in Dawson Creek.
Thank you. So we have an issue around who looks after and is responsible for the animal responsibility, as Council Schuman correctly identified it. And so I honestly remember twenty years ago, sitting on the board, where the city of Dawson Creek looked after their own, had their own function. And it was a completely different service, and it had received completely differently in the community than the service we currently get from the SPCA. The percentage of the volume of work that we get and service from the SPCA for our animals is broken down by this new budget, in terms of sixty percent of the volume is coming from the city of Dawson Creek, in terms of the responsibilities to that, and that's the SPCA's component around the budget. Who is not, who's paying the price in this is the SPCA and the volunteers who are raising money through volunteer efforts to try to help offset the costs, and then the provincial SPCA that funds it to its entirety. And so absolutely, I think to us, in terms of our community, we want to ensure, one, we send a message that our best day is when the SPCA are looking after the animals within our community. And we couldn't do this for a hundred and forty days a year if we take it on, nor could we get the kind of service that we're getting. So to me, that's one easy one for me in terms of how we view it. The second piece, in terms of the advocacy role we help play and support the SPCA, in terms of ensuring that they get the adequate resources through the other areas in the regional district, we'll take that forward with Wendy and deal with it through to our friends in the regional district. Any other comments? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed, it's carried. Thank you. Item seven-six, we have a report from the fourteen-two-three-four from the Director of Infrastructure Sustainable Development regarding a proposed zoning amendment. Council Kenny?
I move the recommendation that report number fourteen-two-three-four from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding zoning amendment to prohibit frac sand storage and community planning charrette be received. Further, that council directs staff to prepare a new industrial zone that would specifically, or specifically permit a frac sand storage facility. Further, that staff prepare a zoning amendment for the existing sand frac storage facility at twenty-one forty-one Imperial Road to be rezoned to the newly created industrial zone. And further, that staff organize a community planning charrette for the lands north of Alaska Avenue between Eighth Street and Fifteenth Street.
Thank you. Seconded, Council Schuman. Discussion? Council Wilbur?
Yeah, a lot of questions come to mind, as I stated last time, but I just, I have a really hard time, and we should be basing decisions on fact, and this has moved forward based on rumor, because it's a rumor. We have nothing in front of us saying that that is what's going between Eighth and Fifteenth. The other question that comes to mind is, where would we expect this new zone to fit within our OCP? You know, is this new zone going to address access that's going to be needed for such a facility that may or may not be coming? And is this new zone that we're creating, if we have no other place for it than what's existing now that we're going to change, are we helping one business get ahead and closing the door potentially to others? And, you know, and the real issue is, is the wording that it's frac sand. Will we be having this conversation if we said we're going to be bringing play sand in on the railway? I mean, there, right now, in that industrial area, is sand being stored and concrete powder. It's already there. So, you know, I just, I guess I'm frustrated, because are we saying that, you know, if a rumor of a potential new business surfaces and the land is zoned for it within our OCP, we're going to quickly make amendments to stop them because, you know, a rumor started that, that nobody wants that there? I mean, what are we saying? Let's hang out there. We're not open for business signs, is what people are telling me. So, you know, it actually, what it reminds me of, the story in the Lower Mainland, where they built these wonderful condos next to a chicken processing plant, and where all the street workers worked. And a year later, they're out picketing, saying, "Clean up my neighborhood." They knew what they were building next to. They knew what the property was zoned for next to them, and they built there, and they bought there, fully knowing that. So we, that's the situation we have there. So, I mean, either we're going to stick to our OCP or we're not, and I'm just not going to support this. I, it, to me, it's not right. It's been moved forward on rumor, not fact, and I can't support something that's not based on facts.
Thank you. Council Malkinson?
Thank you, Worship. There's a few things that I think are pertinent to this that deserve some good discussion. I suppose I wanted to just say first that although I was in favor of Council Parslow's motion addressing this issue in the first place, I am surprised how the recommendation actually ended up playing out. I do, although I do disagree with what, some of what Council Wilbur did say there, I do really think there is a good question in the approach of, you know, creating a specific zone for frac storage facilities, you know, would basically prohibit it except for all of the locations, save for the area where one exists right now. So I was wondering if this was the approach that was possibly recommended to be, you know, the most legally solid approach, or I'm just, I'm just wondering how the recommendation came about, and perhaps I could get a little bit more depth on it than was provided in the report, Your Worship.
Through Your Worship, so Council Wilbur has actually summarized that quite nicely. You have had a rumor that the frac sand storage facility was going to be put in north of the tracks, basically adjacent to Brown Social House. You had a legal opinion saying that such a facility would be allowed under your current zoning, and you moved quickly to prevent any such facility going ahead until you'd considered your options. You've done it entirely without any application, because once you get an application, that's grandfathered, it goes ahead, it is built, and then your actions would be subject to some future application. Originally, you wanted, the original motion was to simply have a wording change, a text change, to prevent frac sand in the, frac sand storage handling facility in that zone. That would have made your existing one non-conforming. This recommendation says, "How about a broader look to see where you would wish to have frac sand facilities and whether you're comfortable with the existing industrials, whether the community is?" Because this is a process where council can't make the decisions in isolation. You make this in a consultation with the public, whether the public is comfortable with the current M2 zoning generally there, or if they would like broader changes. So that's what the recommendation is. And yes, this is, we have no application in front of us, and the moment we do, we can't prevent it.
That's right. That's exactly right. Council Malkinson?
Just thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Council Parslow?
Yes, I think this recommendation aligns perfectly with the intentions of the previous motion. And as staff has just, again, reminded council, that without such a resolution, you, your options are very limited. This piece of property, actually, my understanding of the zoning of that does not align with the official community plan, and it's, it was, an attempt was made to rezone it, and it was defeated by another council at another time. I believe in being proactive rather than reactive, and we know that if we were in a reactive position, we would have very little option. I think one of our duties as members of council is to exercise due diligence on behalf of the community about anything and everything. And we often have to deal with issues that we haven't actually had a presentation on, but we arm ourselves for that. I'm just thinking around fair share as an example. So I will support this recommendation.
Thank you. Further discussion? Ready for the question? All those in favor? Opposed, it's carried. Thank you.
I'll make that recorded, please.
And recorded. Seven-seven, we have a report number fourteen-two-thirty from the Deputy Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding the acceptance of North Peace sewage. Council Malkinson?
Move that we received this report from the Deputy Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding the acceptance of North Peace sewage, and that council directs staff to work with the Peace River Regional District to ensure that the city of Dawson Creek's risks are mitigated prior to the acceptance of rural domestic sewer from North, from the North Peace, and the acceptance of any new customers to the city of Dawson Creek's sewage handling facility. And further, that the city of Dawson Creek take the North Peace's sewer or sewage on an interim basis, effective immediately, while new facilities are built. However, if it is determined through the public approval process that the Peace River Regional District will not be constructing a new sewage handling facility in the city of Dawson Creek, then the city of Dawson Creek will immediately discontinue the acceptance of sewer from the North Peace.
Seconded, Council Schuman. Discussion? Council McFadden?
As I recall, when we talked about this a month ago, was there a million-dollar cost to the city of Dawson Creek to build this sewer facility? Or do I have that wrong?
No, through Your Worship, the capital costs of the parts of the facility that are relative to accepting domestic waste from outside the boundaries is going to be totally paid for, assuming there's a successful public approval process at the regional district. It would be entirely paid for by the taxpayers in the regional district, and there would be a user fee to cover the operational expenses. However, the portion of the facility that would be relative to the city adding a second tourist RV dump on the same location would be borne by the city. And that's an amount, I don't have that amount for you, but it is more in the neighborhood of three hundred thousand than, than a million.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council Wilbur?
Just a question through You, Worship, to staff. I noticed in the report that there were some incidents in Fort St. John around contaminated product being in the sewage. So it was also mentioned that some of the vehicles used to haul that were used for dual purposes, so there was some waste in there that would destroy their system, and that's why they didn't want it there, and we run that, that possibility. Is there any way that we can put in there that we'll only accept it, sewage that's hauled in vehicles that are solely for that purpose? Like, how do we protect ourselves from contamination?
Yeah, through Your Worship, so each hauler would have to sign a contract with us saying that they would only haul non-contaminated domestic sewage. But we are, in addition, the recommendation is saying the regional district needs to pay for us to man that's set up, so that actually it's open for, say, twelve hours a day. It's manned during that time, and every load is tested, just in case somebody's not careful about steaming out their tank when it goes from one use to another. However, there is a, the mayor, who is more familiar with the dynamics at the regional district than I am, has suggested that you might want to consider an amendment, because firstly, the process at the regional district is not certain. There's no way of knowing yet, and probably there will be, I think the outcome is somewhere near the end of January, when we will know whether they have approved this. And Fort St. John is taking a lot of heat because they have a service that they are discontinuing, to accept the domestic waste. And I think the mayor's suggestion to you is, let's wait until the outcome of that process before we start accepting sewage, so that we don't put ourselves in a position where we accept it for a month, and then we have to turn it down, because you have no aspiration to accept it forever. And that seems to me like very good advice from the mayor, just having a look at the amount of emotion that seems to be going around this issue in Fort St. John.
Yeah, so I'll speak to that, because it came up at our Peace River Regional District Board Meeting last week, where the AAP, the alternate approval process that is going through the Peace River Regional District, through the series of meetings now about water sewage, for the regional district to construct a facility that allows the electoral areas in C, D, and E, or wherever, to have sewage disposal location, because the city of Fort St. John will not be accepting it after December thirty-first. And so last Thursday, at our regional district board meeting, it was raised by one of the electoral area directors that the electoral area E, I think it was, was not, it was not going over favorably from their perspective, that they wanted to have their contribution go towards constructing a facility in municipality, either Chatwind or Dawson Creek, to accept it. And so when I, I'm going to reach out to Chair Goodings and the CAO this week after hearing that, because my concern is that if we start to accept the materials on January first from the North Peace, and it doesn't, and the approval process does not pass, we then are going to have to say, "Well, we can't absorb this on our own, and we're not going to. We're not going to take the liability. We're not going to take the risk, and we're not going to take the cost with it." And so we would have to end the service then, and I think it's probably more prudent for us as a community to say, "We need to first ensure that there's some certainty on behalf of the regional district that you want to partner with us, because I don't want us to get into January or February, where now we're providing the service, and then we would have to shut it off." And I just think it's probably a much more prudent conversation to have first, to say, "Before we start to accept it, we want to have certainty that we're not going to be the ones that now are all of a sudden forced to shut it off because the electoral areas choose not to participate in it." And I'm good with it either way. I think there's a benefit for us in partnering with the electoral areas, to be able to share in it and provide that service. We ensure we got, we remove the risk and liability to our own infrastructure and our lagoon system. But at the same time, we're not going to take that on if we don't have some certainty to it, so.
Council Schuman?
Yeah, I really like that, Dale, or Mayor Bumstead, because I see it like this, so Fort St. John shuts them down, we start taking it here, they're still looking at the approval, like for the borrowing. Well, why should they go, move forward with that? Why should they agree to do that, the rural peoples, when, oh, look, Dawson Creek's just taking it anyways? So why should, you know, why should we go for that? And so I, I like that amendment. I think that's a good idea.
Thank you. Council Parslow?
Yeah, so right now, we have a motion before us, and just I want to make a comment about Council Wilbur's mulling over, can we just say that we would accept this if the VAC tracks were just designated for sewage, rather than have this risk of one being contaminated? I think that's something we need to consider. But I do support your sentiments here, and what Council Schuman said. So again, I'm just making sure that can we, can we refer this matter to the first council meeting after staff believes that all the i's are dotted and all the t's crossed from the regional district? In other words, the regional district has got their act together, the rural residents who will benefit from this have supported it, and then we will consider it. Is, so is it an order to staff here to refer this to the meeting following? Your understanding, or our concerns that this is an operational thing for the regional district is taken care of?
You certainly could. The message- The message you would be sending to the regional district then is even if there is a positive vote on the electoral approval, and they will be building us a new $3.5 million facility, there's no guarantee that we will take that sewage while those facilities are being built. That's the difference, is a referral says you're taking no position on that yet. This recommendation says you're willing to take it even before the approval, but in-between would be the one where you're messaging to them that if they approve, you will take the sewage on an interim basis. So up to you guys, which you prefer.
And I think we just want to have that understanding that the alternate approval process is, my understanding is, finished at the end of January, the public meetings, and they'll be moving forward. So they'll know at that point if they're going forward with the funding mechanism through the regional district. And then, and then we're not in that position where we have to guess. My worry is that if the alternate approval process fails, and we say we're going to take the applicant for a period of time, and if it fails, we then have to shut them off. And I just don't want us to be, I don't think it's positive for us to be put in that position to take it for a period of time, set the service, and then we shut it off. Then we're looking like the bad guy. I don't think that's true.
So can I move that this matter be referred to the meeting following the resolution of this matter by the regional district people?
Yes, you can.
Sure.
Is that the in-between thing?
No. Say, we won't, we won't even deal with this until you have got all your necessary approvals in place.
Yes. It gives a month with no service, is my understanding, because we're saying we're going to take it the end of January, and the approval process ends the end of Jan, sorry, the end of December. The approval process ends at the end of January. So there would be a month where we wouldn't be taking the service until we have certainty on the funding mechanism and the liability component.
And actually, your worship, you're not committing to take it then?
Yeah.
And that would be a negotiation at that time.
Right.
Counselor Schuman?
So I'm fine with that.
She's seconding it? Sorry? Did you make that?
Yeah, I was seconding that, but then I want to. So, sitting at the regional district table, it's sort of, I was sort of under the impression that if the approvals went through and the regional sewer function was going to happen, that Fort St. John may then decide to take, take that sewage. Has it now been stated that they absolutely will not ever, 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 ever? Is that how it's gone down?
I don't think they've, I think they've said the end of December they're not taking it any further, and the regional district are looking at constructing a sewer handling facility in Charlie Lake or wherever. And then we will partner with them for the South Peace to be able to deal with the long-term ramifications for this area. So, and so that's still moving forward. I don't think Fort St. John has changed their position.
No, that's why I'm seconding.
Okay. I remember there being some sort of, if they knew that that was going to happen, that...
No. Their concern is the federal liability that extends to the community, and they're not willing to take that. And it's partly of their infrastructure, partly of how their design is. So I don't want to pre-guess and all that. We're just, I'm just saying we need to make sure we have that process in place for us.
Counselor Wilber?
So I just want to back up here. So it's my understanding then, and Jim can reaffirm for me, that in the interim, that if this was to go through as written, that the regional district would cover the cost of manning our station and testing before it goes in? Is that my understanding of what you're saying?
Through your worship, that would be your non-negotiable demand? They haven't agreed to that yet, but that would be what you would be demanding.
So, because my point, I don't want to, I don't want to say, put them in a position where they don't have service, but I want to protect what we have. And I, so maybe, maybe it's not that we, you know, if they, if they're not going to go forward with the facility, then we would say upfront, if you're not going forward with it, we're not going to continue the service. But in the interim of having that service, you need to provide the funding to have it manned and tested so that we're not running course of damaging our system. I can, that I can live with. I don't, I just don't want to put us in a position where all of a sudden we have contamination, and now our system needs to be fixed, right? But I think if we're open upfront saying that we would continue the service as long as they're going forward, and we tell them that upfront, we're not all of a sudden saying we're stopping service, and to upfront say, you need to provide the funding for someone to man that station and to do the testing.
And that's the concern, that the AAP process doesn't end until the end of January, so they can't give us that. And so my worry is, we, we provide the service for a month, and then we got to shut it off. I think that's a bad message. We should, we should have certainty before we start providing the service.
Nope.
Counselor Parslow?
Just a procedural matter here. We have a motion to refer on the floor, and that is what's been, should be debated.
Which is actually not supposed to be debatable.
That's right.
But this has been a flavorful discussion.
I would like this question put to the floor.
Thank you, your worship. We had a motion on the floor before Charlie moved to refer.
But this takes precedence.
Yes, motion to refer takes precedence.
Okay. Ready for the question?
We have our rules, we should keep to them.
All those in favor? Opposed? Got it recorded?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
I like it.
You guys have, you realize, you've cut off a potential graphic for Mr. Stewart the next time along? We all love the Volkswagen Beetle. Can you imagine all the development goes to Fort St. John and all the comes to Dawson Creek?
Report 7.8.
Just, just sorry, I may be out of order.
Go ahead.
I don't think we should forget the comments, the concerns raised by Counselor Wilbur about, I mean, there's going to be a lot of fluids coming down here, and I think it's a viable business for somebody to have a designated truck for sewage only. I think we should consider putting that as one of our requirements. I mean, we all know what goes on, right? There's good, there's bad, and there's sometimes some people get lazy. I don't want any contamination of our sewage system. And so I would like to put forward a motion that one of our conditions for future acceptance would be that rack trucks would need to be designated for sewage only.
So, and that's, and that's going to be part of the negotiations?
Part of the negotiations.
Once we get to that point? And...
Just put that on the table, and let's resolve it, so staff knows that.
Says it right here.
Part of the issue is...
No, it doesn't say that.
Yeah, it does. Mitigate our risk.
Part of the issues that were faced in the North Peace was the companies changing the placards even. So we, the only way to do it is to legitimately man it and test it. So we'll put that into our negotiations as we move it forward, to ensure we adhere to the risks and ensure we manage those risks for our community.
I withdraw.
Bylaws, sorry, A 7.8, report number 14-237, the Director of Corporate Administration regarding the municipal election official results.
Move to receive the report for information.
Thank you. Counselor Malkinson, seconded. Counselor Wilbur, discussion?
So I raised it earlier. Sincerely to everybody, appreciate the results. I appreciate the folks that put their name forward to serve the community. You got to walk a mile in shoes for folks to appreciate what goes on. Disappointing to me in terms of voter turnout, 25%. And everything we do as a community to try to influence and engage and try to get people to come out and vote. But you know what it is? It is what it is, and you move forward with that. And to the staff who managed the election, thanks so much for the work, the effort, and having those results within 10 minutes of the closing of the polls was amazing.
Thank you for that.
It's so cool. It's so cool to be able to have that. So thank you.
Are you ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Zoning Amendment Bylaws, 8.1, zoning amendment by law number 4243, comprehensive development for consideration for third reading. Now, we have, bylaw 4243, 2014, the comprehensive development zone by law for consideration for third reading and adoption. Counselor Malkinson?
Before we move the bylaw, your worship, there were, there was a presenter in the public hearing this morning for this bylaw that objected to the consideration of it outright, saying that it wasn't legally taking place because he hadn't received notice. Is there any, I'm just wondering, is that an issue to address right now?
Well, a couple of points on that, your worship. We believe we've met the notice requirements, but regardless of which, the effect of that bylaw is to bring the current CD2 zone within the OCP. And the presentation by the same folks was that they wanted you to apply the OCP to their zoning. So I don't know that they have actually told you they are against having their zone in the OCP. I think their arguments were actually to the reverse of that.
And the question with regards to notice, you saying we've met the notice? Brenda?
Yes, if zoning amendment affects more than 10 properties, direct notification's not required.
Thank you.
So we did meet the notice requirement.
Does that answer clarify?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
So I'm looking for zoning amendment by law. Counselor Schuman, move? Seconded. Counselor Malkinson, discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Zoning Amendment Bylaw number 14-18, by law number 4244, the residential, report from the Residential Development Committee for consideration for third reading. Counselor Parslow?
I'd like to move that we refer this matter to the December meeting, so after we've had time to process all the information we received today.
So that will be referring it to the December 15th meeting?
Yes.
I just, Dr. Some Documents here that I...
Okay. So, your worship, if you, if you receive one more word of input from anyone, you have to redo your public hearing, which is fine. That may be what you wish to do, but you are not allowed in zoning. Once you have read it twice and had your public hearing, you can't take another single drop of input before making your decision, unless it's in a public context where everyone hears the same thing.
Thank you. Counselor Parslow?
I'm not intending receiving any more. I want to process what I've got.
Thank you. So, so we have a mover and a seconder?
Is that fine?
It's...
It's dangerous.
So, if you're reconsidering your amendments, or if you're not, you've just had a wide range of input at the public hearing, none of which was a surprise to you. Every piece of it, including the comments about the ALR, was referenced in the previous report saying, these are the things you're going to hear. Everyone is speaking to the danger of uncertainty. What we are talking about here is prolonging uncertainty. The consequence of that is, again, the, the legalities around, say, the grace period for applying for DOMA permits or building permits. If I was the developers who were in this room, I'd strongly advise you to get all of your applications in for all of the building you intend to do in the next two years into the city in the next couple days if we do a referral, because I'm pretty sure our lawyers are going to tell us that, you know, they have a grace period to do so, which may be your intention. I mean, I'm not speaking to whether you should or shouldn't do this. I'm saying you've, you've run a process towards decision, and prolonging that decision is going to change the advice we've given you previously about things like processing of applications.
So we have a motion, and we have had it seconded?
I don't think we have.
Sorry? Schuman?
I don't think I seconded it.
Oh, sorry, I thought you had. So before I move any further then, so I got a motion to refer to December 15th. Do I have a seconder?
Is there any other option?
Do I have a seconder?
I'll second it.
Seconded, Counselor Wilbur. Discussion.
The motion was to refer. We can't discuss it.
Sure we can.
The only thing you can discuss is why you're referring it.
Can we discuss it more?
No, we're...
No, no.
Your procedure by law says you can only discuss the reason for referral, which Counsel Parslow has said that he wishes to...
I wish, wish time to process the information I've received.
So we've got a referral motion, and it's been seconded. So are you ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. 8.3, we have a report from the Chief Financial Officer regarding sewer rates and regulations amendment by law. Counselor Parslow?
Yeah, I've got it, yeah, on my screen. This is housekeeping linked to the borrowing of money for the sewer trunk line, and I just would like to move that, oops, I dropped by it. Somebody else better move it. I can't find it. Oh, yeah. It's moving. Gone away, though.
I'll move the recommendation.
Thank you, Sue.
Nice move by Counselor Kenny.
Report number 14-231 from Chief Financial Officer be received. Further, that sewer rates and regulations amendment by law, 4245, 2014, be provided for the first three readings.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Malkinson, discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you.
Your worship, may we recess?
Yeah.
Let's take a five-minute recess, please. So item 9, 9-1, under Mayor's Business, we have an update on the Memorial Arena, the Curling Ring, and we have a report from the Director of Community Services. The magnitude of this decision for us in terms of impacts to our community as a winter community, we provide recreational opportunities and services. So this one, in terms of having an impact on a significant component of our community, obviously has significance. We apologize that we didn't get some of this information in part of the agenda, but it was just impossible. The staff have been working literally day and night trying to get this put together for us for the consideration of next steps. And obviously, the report that's been submitted by Duncan in regards to outlining the background, the implications to what's happened to the facility and the chiller and the refrigeration for us at the Memorial Arena and the Curling Ring is of significance. And so at that, I want to turn it over to administration to give us a more fulsome explanation and next steps.
Thank you, worship. What I have is our team here, including our power engineering consultant, and I wondered if I could get them to come up and kind of walk you through the report.
Thank you.
Morning.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
So, good morning, your worship. With us, we have Duncan, the far-left deputy of community services, and we have Mike Garcia, who's been providing us the professional consulting side to giving us some ideas and moving forward with the challenges that we have in front of us. And Mike has got a, will supply us with any support or questions of counsel from the technical side, and we'll probably try and walk ourselves through the report. And if there's anything specific to the report, please ask away, because I think there's still a number of questions that council may get from the constituents, from our user groups, and to ensure that we're providing you with as much information as we can. First and foremost, I want to update council that the safety of this is probably the highest priority for us. It's something that we feel very secure about, that safety was number one, and that all risks, as we eliminate them, as we move forward, were critical, and that no one was hurt. And I think that's something we have to be paramount in our minds to understand as we move forward and trying to understand alternatives or options. Within the report, Duncan did a great job to outline, and I also understand this was sent to our user groups this morning as well, so they will have copies of this. The summary background, and there's a lot of information attached there. It's laid out chronologically, date-wise, and steps that were taken as we came across the information that critically showed us where our brine contamination was identified. With that, it was in the first week of November that we have closed the facilities and have done a number of tests and a number of first steps to start to look at what-ifs. And I want to be sure for council to let you know that there are no complete 100% total easy answers to this, and that each step as we move forward progressively could still lead to closures or additional information required to council. Okay, so with that, I think you'd have to look through, and we could, we could walk you through the alternatives of that. And I might ask Mike at any time as well to jump in, because that's where the expertise lies. lies. So the first step that we looked at was how and where was the ammonia coming through? And to date, we still have not been able to 100% say exactly where that is, but we've taken precautions to get us to a point where we believe that we can bring to council next step options. Okay? So the first step alternative that Duncan had outlined was the neutralization of the brine. That process, we've started today, because that has to be completed, whether Alternative A or Alternative B is the answer, but the safety and neutralization of the brine to get the ammonia out is critical. So that has been ordered this morning, and those were based off the results of the two last tests that were sent to Edmonton Lab. And that has been confirmed, and the numbers confirmed for the added has have come from TFM and Mike, and confirming with the chemists on that. Although we would neutralize, that still doesn't tell us that if we still have a pinhole leak or how the ammonia is getting in. So in order to detect that, the chillers were compressed up and pressurized, and what we can tell you is that there's no catastrophic pressure drop that would indicate that we had a major leak, but that didn't, can only tell you part of the story. That still doesn't detect pinhole leaks of ammonia or where the ammonia was coming into the brine. So that Alternative 1, still a leak. Where's the leak, and how is it getting into the system? Alternative 2, Duncan outlined that we could close the Memorial Arena and engage an option with Global Spectrum to open the Encana Event Center. And yet, there's a number of features within the report that said Encana has not operated since 2012, have laid off staff over the time, and would have to restart some of those challenges and issues around operations. And there were some costs that were put together for council's consideration, based on the operating cost for basically December 1st, the end of season, additional cost savings at the Memorial, and the net loss between revenues and expenditures. So those figures are there, and the best we can tell you, it's going to range between that $100,000 to $125,000 to $150,000. Okay? Expenditures were $350,000. Our savings were around $150,000, and $90,000, top end of revenue, which would still move over, and some of that may be lost or not. So if approved, that would require council's consideration and debate as well. Option 3 was looking at a temporary chiller, and all indications are that although we can locate a chiller, the reality of the true hookup and time factors and from start to finish would be significant, and the costs are fairly significant. The significant side of that was about $291,800 for a rental, and that's only a rental, and temporary use for that till the end of the year. That chiller would be specifically looked at to assist in the salvaging of the Curling Club ice installation, and that was if, again, the alternatives of the brine, neutralization, detection, and proper authorization back from BC Safety Authority to tell us if and when we could actually open. One of the issues that would be looked at as we progressively move forward, one of the tests that would be completed, it's called an EDDI testing, EDDI current testing, which then requires us to remove the ammonia from the chillers and do an integrity test on the brine lines within the chillers. That test would take time, but would also be another indicator to council of the safety of our chillers and the ability to continue operating forward as we go forward. And this is the part where I'm hoping that we get some good dialogue and debate back through, and Mike can assist us with that, because even though we do that testing, it may not still show us the pinhole leak in the brine line, but would give us an overall picture of integrity of the life cycle still left on the chillers. Okay? That requires specialty, and understandably, most of this is beyond the operational standard that we, as a municipality, have. All of this requires specialty assistance. The fifth option is that council could look at complete closure to both facilities and replace the ammonia plant with an alternative, and one of those alternatives would be a Freon, which understandably would be a long-term capital investment and reallocation of those decisions strategically, which would also require some input into regards to operating right across the board in Encana, the Kinn Arena, the Curling Club, and Memorial as we move forward, because those would be fairly significant capital investments. We have some early quotes that we provided for you from Train, and Train is another outside expertise that we've reached out to. That could reach up to, just for the Memorial and the Curling Club Arena, to replace those two chillers and plants, could be well over $1 million. As well, council needs to understand that we are dealing with, and I think this is not just a local issue, aging infrastructure. And as we are moving forward, and TFM was in to do some consulting work with us on training, it was also identified that we were pulling together for capital review into the near future was what those expenditures would start to look like. Part of our challenge within the Memorial Arena is the isolation still of the brine leaks. As we pressure up, plug one brine leak, our header trench appears to pop another leak. So that's okay if you don't have ammonia in the line. Brine, you know, is not something that can hurt anyone, but when you add ammonia into the brine, becomes the challenge. So issues within the header trench, an aging plant, and the integrity of the chiller long-term is something council needs to take into consideration. There are a number of implications that if council wanted to go back through as well that we, in the report, have outlined. All of the social, environmental, personal, and financial options have been brought forward to council for review. And one of the key things within this report is that anytime we get ammonia and dealing with ammonia, BC Safety Authority has to be involved and will continue to work with us as the partner to ensure that we can safely reopen our buildings, and safely means basically zero ammonia, and that we will have to put together a plan that they will still have to approve long-term. So the risk assessment, it's high. The compliance is with the BC Safety Authority and could potentially lead into WorkSafe The recommendation brought forward. Do you want me to read that, Jim?
Actually, maybe I'll speak to the recommendation, because it's tough for the department to recommend discontinuing service to their customers. So the recommendation is the only, it is true that we do not know how ammonia got into the brine in the first place. None of our tests to date have given us that eureka moment to tell us. What we do know is the tests are showing that the amount of ammonia is coming down, and the chemists tell us that we can neutralize the brine. The recommendation is, within our current budget envelope, what we can do is neutralize the brine in both facilities and monitor. And if no more contamination shows up for the rest of the ice season, those ice seasons can progress under the normal schedules. If at any time after neutralizing the brine, even one part per million of ammonia shows back up, our recommendation is you close both surfaces, you do the work you need to to find out exactly what happened, you put it in your capital budget for next year to replace in the fall, so they can open up in September with a regular ice season. But not that you explore an alternative chiller for the Curling Rink and not that you move to Encana, because both of those expenditures are outside the current budget envelope. And last meeting, you told me there will be no tax increase, there will be no new services, and there will be no cut services. So I cannot recommend to you that you incur those expenses, regardless of how much the department would like me to have you do that.
Thank you. So I'm going to speak to this. For me, the aspect is, as administration have pointed out, is safety, and so you're not going to, and we don't absolutely will put anybody at risk, our employees, the public, the users, anybody. But also, we're a winter community, and we rely on providing winter activities and services for our community. And so for me, it's about, first, short-term, how do we get through till the end of March? And trying to provide the services that we normally provide and are expected by our community. And then, two, is what do we do long-term in our capital planning to ensure that we have this facility and facilities back up and operating in 2015 in September reliably and responsibly for our obligation? And so with all due respect to our administration, we understand that accountability of how and what we do with the budget, but for me, it's first, we continue down the road of ensuring that with the testing that's going on today, that these chillers, this can function and is functioning safely and responsibly, so we can provide that service ideally for the next two or three months. And if we can't, then I'm in favor of us looking at alternatives. And I want to ask a question about option number two, because it said to rent a temporary chiller was $300,000, but I wasn't clear on the temporary chiller would provide an estimate of $291,000 for installation or removal, and total cost would exceed $300,000. But is this, and it says this estimate is to replace the Curling Rink system only? And so it wouldn't do anything to the Memorial Arena ice?
No, it would not. There are separate chillers for the two facilities.
Okay. All right. So for me, it's about, first, we find the option to, can we, can this system operate today with the testing that's going on? It's not showing the leaks. How long before we can make the determination that it is, and we can open them, and/or is that an option? And then, second is, what's our next step if we can't do that? And I'm in favor of moving to a next step to provide an alternative to our community. Counselor Parslow?
Yes, I'm with you on that. So I'd like to put forward a recommendation for debate. But I do want to say I thank the staff, the engagement of consultants, and the eminent sort of emphasis that's been played on public safety. And you know what? There's some opportunities here as well, in spite of all this current turmoil, which is regrettable. So I'd like to move that Report Number 14-238 from the Deputy Director of Community Services, re-brine contamination at the Memorial Arena and Curling Rink be received. Further, that council direct staff to neutralize the brine using an ammonia scavenger in both the Memorial Arena and Curling Rink, regularly monitor and submit a proposal to the BC Safety Authority to reopen the facilities once ongoing testing has shown no ammonia contamination during a suitable period. And this is where my recommendation starts to depart from what's before us. Further, that council direct that if these options do not allow continuation of ice surfaces in either or both of these facilities, that the remainder of the affected ice season at the Curling Facility be canceled. Should that be necessary, that council further direct the preparation of capital budget estimates to fully return the buildings to functionality for the 2015-16 ice season. And here's another change. Further, in the eventuality of the closure of the Memorial Arena for the remainder of the 2014-15 season, that council direct staff to move activities from the Memorial Arena to the Encana Event Center, subject to securing necessary staff, at a net estimated cost of $110,000.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded, Counselor Wilber.
I'd like to speak to the motion, if I may. I recognize that this is, this incurs additional operating costs, but I'm sure we can find a hundred-odd thousand dollars as we develop our budget for next year. I just think that for the young kids, you know, a skating season is a large slice of their life that can't be recaptured. Similarly, for the young kids playing hockey. So I think, you know, we often get emergencies presented to us, and we take action on them. This aging infrastructure issue is going to be before us, and I would be fully supporting, you know, the up-to-date chillers, new ones if they're needed with Freon or other, whatever technology is there, but the one that's least likely to be dangerous in our capital budget. But I'm, notwithstanding what staff has told us about the budget considerations, as new information comes along, we have to make some decisions for the benefit of the community. And so, regrettably, I'm advocating for something that increases potentially expenditures, but I'm sure we can find that, I know we can, through some trimming elsewhere. So I would strongly encourage council to support this.
Thank you. Counselor Wilber?
Yeah, it's been asked of me, and so Charlie's motion kind of brings it forward to me. If we had to move the hockey and figure skaters up to the Memorial Arena, is there any reason why we could not put four sheets of ice into the Kinn Arena for curling?
Well, again, your worship, you would, if you compress all the ice users into a single arena like you are now at Kinn, you'd be spending the 110 to prevent compressing them all into the ice arena. You could decide to share the pain and have the Kinn be a single-use facility, because with the pebbled ice, you can't use multiple use. So you could convert it to curling, you could move to the Encana. You would have a bigger impact than 110, because the rental revenue from the, we've been conclusively advised by the Curling Rink that they wouldn't have the money to pay extra up to the level that the hockey players, the figure skaters, and the speed skaters are paying. So it would be a bigger number than 110 to do that, but you could do it and share the pain between both. You, that would be up to you.
Thank you. Counselor Schuman?
Yeah, my, I was just trying to review Charlie's motion in my head. So we're just talking about the ice users for the skating. We're talking about closing the Curling Rink, so that would end.
Curling Rink unfortunately would be closed for the season.
Assuming the brine can't be effectively.
Assuming that's all the remedial stuff, yes. This is all with that as a preface. If the, if the, it can't be fixed, we, unfortunately, the Curling Rink would be closed for the season.
We're not going to spend the $300,000 to open the Curling Rink.
Closed for the ice uses. We would drain, well, we are neutralizing the brine, and then we would drain it out.
Yeah.
And so you would have the banquet facilities would still be available once that was done.
And this motion would, like, I think it's been one of the really good things that come out of here, taught into staff, is how cooperative everybody's been on this, right? And my notion is, you know, if we can get the, through Ryan's good work, the Encana Event Center up and running, we may be able to accommodate many of the regular things at Kinn, but those special events, tournaments, et cetera, could occur still. I mean, it also gives greater use of our wonderful Encana Event Center facility, but it does entail some extra costs. But I just think this is, skating and hockey are anchor points in the community, and I think of other things that money has been spent on. and I think of other things that money has been spent on, and this affects youth, and they're kind of important for all of us, what we do for them. So, that's the idea. Just trying to summarize it for Counsel Schuman.
Thank you. Counselor McFadden.
First of all, great report, exhaustive, very well-written, and lots of good information. Timelines, when will you know whether or not you've washed the ammonia out of the brine? How long will that take before you make a decision?
Well, first, the product has to be added, and it has to be monitored, and it has to come up clean.
Yeah.
That's only possible if there isn't ongoing ammonia leak. So, that would be never. We would know quite quickly if that is not the case. In terms of when we can reopen, that's a negotiation with the B.C. Safety Authority. They're going to demand some number of clean tests in a row, but that number hasn't been determined yet, because we haven't been able to show them we can get one.
And I did see a report from Ryan here about if we, if he were to get the nod to go open the Encana Center, it would take him a week, seven days, 10 days? I can't remember.
Subject to staff availability, he, and any intervening event, you're probably looking at a five-to-seven day process then.
Oh, it's not too bad then. Thank you.
As opposed to the temporary chiller for the curling rink, which would have to be transported here, built on site in the room. I mean, there's a lot longer timeline on that.
Thank you. Counselor Schuman.
So, Ryan doesn't have the staff on payroll at the moment for, but we do, because we had them for the Memorial. Are they transferable?
So, I would strongly advise you not to do that. At the moment, Encana Event Center is a privately operated, non-union shop, and our facilities are union shops. But the law says, if you spend a minute with that as union work, it will be union work forever. And your deficit right now, at 1.4 million?
That was just a good question.
I, I think you would, you would, it would be an aspirational target to keep the deficit at the same level if it was being operated by unionized employees.
Thank you. Further questions? Counselor Wilber.
I have a question, but just something, and a great report for sure, lots of information. But just listening to Barry speak, I'm thinking, one of the things that we need to keep in mind moving forward is that we may be looking at replacing those chillers. We may never find out where that leak is coming from, so realistically, it's aged. And I think we're going to have to keep in our mind, moving forward in budgeting, that we be planning for that, yeah, for some money to replace that. I mean, to me, that comes out very clear, that we may never find where that's come from.
Prioritization of our capital budget discussions will have another line item, I'm anticipating, for 2015.
Sorry, Shelley, but it's realistic.
Further discussion, further questions, further comments? You ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you.
The department is very happy, because that's the recommendation they put on my desk before I changed it.
Thank you, guys. And you know what? I say this, the work that these guys have been putting into this nonstop for us has demonstrated the significance of how important it is for us, and we really appreciate the effort, you guys. Thank you. Greg?
Thank you.
Next item for mayor's business, I attended last week a meeting at the... My lips are moving, aren't they?
Yeah, they are.
Thank you. Last week, I attended a meeting at the B.C. Business Council in Vancouver, and it was a really interesting event in terms of getting the feedback in terms of how important the focus of the B.C. Business Council is putting towards infrastructure development for the province of British Columbia, and really emphasizing that message to the province, both provincially and federally. Great, great lineup of people there that were providing direction and input, and it was a really very informative day for me in terms of being able to attend here that discussion and conversation. It really emphasized to me the importance for us in terms of how we talk about infrastructure development for our community, and the importance of what we do, and how we develop that infrastructure for our community, and prioritization. Certainly, that last week, when you see the emphasis that's put on by senior business leaders across the province about really making that move towards infrastructure development, and the emphasis around the LNG, the natural gas development for Northern British Columbia and resource development, was right there at the top of the topics for the B.C. Business Council. So, I just wanted to give an update to council and the community in terms of that meeting last week. I talked briefly earlier about the 2014 municipal election, and you know, sincerely appreciate, first of all, to council who have put their names forward, and to the successful candidates to Mark and Paul, congratulations on being successful, and we look forward to having you join council now and work together for the next four years on behalf of the community. It's a significant step that people make, folks make, when they put their hand up to serve the community, and, you know, to the six people that didn't make it, that weren't successful. I was at the Pauling, Calum Crook Performing Arts Center the other night as the polls closed, and three of the candidates were there that were awaiting the results and are called into the room, and all three, neither, none of the three that were there were successful in their bid. You know, it gave me a little bit of reflection in terms of, here we ask people, and people put their hand up to serve the community, and nobody puts their hand up to lose, nobody puts their hand up to come in seventh place and not get a chance to represent the community. They put their heart and souls into trying to demonstrate that they got the ability and capacity and something to offer their community. And then, as I was watching the results come in through the evening, and the disappointment when you see 25% of the population took the time to go out and vote, we provide free busing, and we give advance polls, and we give all the opportunity for people to exercise that opportunity to have a say in how your community moves forward and provide that leadership. And so, for me, it was really frustrating when I see the look of disappointment in the candidates' eyes who weren't successful that night, hurt, right? They didn't make it, and I felt badly that people put their hand up and do make it, and, or don't make it, and then the frustration that the community doesn't put their hand, doesn't take the time to exercise that vote. And, you know, the whole North Region, Northeast B.C., was the best, was 35% of the population turned out, and the average was like 25%. So, it's, I think it's something we need to be aware of and push forward to, to try to engage the community. But I just say that, that, you know what, we, there's a, there's a common thing out there, that, well, they need to do something to make it so people want to come out and vote. Well, guess what? Everybody out there is "they." Everybody out there are the "they" that can make a difference, that are the ones that can have an impact on your community and the leadership of what goes on. So, again, I appreciate everybody that stepped up, put their name forward. Congratulations to Shailly, and Terry, and Charlie, and Cheryl, and again, to Paul and Mark, we look forward to having you there. To Duncan and Sue, our last meeting, and so, I want to give the opportunity to you guys now to have a say in your final meetings.
Well, 30 seconds, Terry?
Thank you very much. No, I appreciate it, Dale. I did prepare something, believe it or not. I just, it's been a responsibility that's meant so much to me over the last few years, so I just feel, you know, there's some things, you know, I know that I've learned, and I kind of want to share with you guys if I can, and I'm not certain about whether or not I'll be able to make the inaugural meeting on December 1st, is it?
First.
So, yeah, I figured I'd speak while you guys all had to listen to me. But yeah, I just want to thank you guys again, and just thank everybody that's present as well, and thank staff as well. I was very privileged, well, I'm very privileged to be in your presence today and in all of your presence for the last three years, whether it was running the Rage Game, or running the gate at the Rage Games with Terry, or having tea with Charlie on any odd day, or tearing the roof off a Trapper's Cabin at Pioneer Village with Stu Flynn, or driving back from 100 Mile House with Sue, or, you know, the library board meetings, fall fair parades, and arguing with Danny Shields at his coffee table. The last three years, I really got the chance to see how our community worked from behind the scenes, and to see the people involved and how their ambitions turned into reality. And what was most rewarding is that I got to be a part of it, I got to affect that change. It's been three years that I'll be forever grateful for, no matter where I decide to head, three years that have taught me so much, not just about the things I expected either. You know, I expected to learn about the snow clearing policy and transportation in the city, but I also learned about the momentum of meetings, you know, to find out how to get to yes on certain issues that I felt needed to be changed or could be missed. I learned to improve my surroundings with my presence, to endeavor to treat all people with fairness, to find what issues I found most important to bring, and to bring them to the table and see them through. Most importantly, I learned to consistently consider what's in the best interests of the citizens of Dawson, present and future. Often, people say it's a good bet to find the strength of an organization by looking at its people, and I think that the city's a really good example. We've got a great diversity of backgrounds and interests on council. You know, whether it's Terry for the airport, or transit, or public safety even, you know he's going to bring common sense and not shy away from confrontation. And if it's Shailly, you know, you've got somebody that's very well-connected, hardworking, with, you know, focus on development and a belief that every voice counts, and just very, very level-headed inner focus, I've found. And in Cheryl, I think you see somebody that's so passionate on progressive issues. I've gained a lot of respect for you in the last three years. You know, you fought a lot of uphill battles for things that you believed in, and I think the city's a lot better for it. Even if I did disagree with something you were bringing on an issue, I felt the decision that we had reached was so, worth so much more, because it had been tested by a bunch of perspectives, not just one. That's the value in diversity to me. I couldn't say the number of times that Sue's experience in grant writing and related areas has come into good use in this room. I've found Sue to be a peaceful, consistent voice on council, again, like Cheryl, advocating for progressive issues that are so important to making Dawson Creek what it is. And Charlie's been a fantastic voice for the city, in my opinion, spoke contemplation and wisdom into the various issues that he's passionate about, about all issues. We've really benefited, I think, from his attention to fiscal health of the city. And before I compliment you, Dale, I don't want to forget Mike. He provided a lot of good guidance for us newly-elected officials in our first month, and as time wore on, I came to recognize him as somebody who fought for the greater logic on issues that came before us. He really respected the role of the council and the democracy of it all. And Dale, you were fantastic. You know, you came into things halfway through, which inevitably came along with some tension and friction, but we all got to understand each other, and you've been respectful, patient, but assertive with your opinions. And I know that you really have the values of the community at heart in your voice in every meeting. Now, more than ever, it's a time that we'll need the leadership that you've built on collaboration with everybody. It's not just this council that has great individuals with diverse backgrounds, though, your worship. I, I've been even luckier than that. I got to work closely with Jim over the last three years to get fearless advice on any issues that I was considering raising. His ability to put working parts together, his sharpness at council meetings, has really shaped how matters have rolled out here, and his and his staff's actions have reflected a belief in hard work and high standards. And he's done it all in service to the city that he's been so dedicated to all these years, but all the other folks of the city, too. Every day, you guys demonstrate what it means to be humble public servants. And Jim, the respect that I've been treated with over the years by your staff has made me even more proud to have my name on the minutes of our meetings.
Thank you.
I've got to thank the citizens of Dawson as well, the folks that elected me, the constant supporters, and people that frequently called me as well. I just want to thank them very much. They really put me on my A-game when I knew I'd be expected to explain the rationale for any way that I voted on a topic. The job becomes easy when you remember who you do it for. Then there's my family, especially my mom. They were always willing to test me on current events, and she was able to attend a council meeting in 2012. She was a very loving person, and I try to pass that love on every day. As I say all that about the people I've known, people that make up Dawson Creek to me, it becomes obvious how human of a process that council really is. People have inhuman expectations of it, to, you know, expect us to be incapable of making mistakes. I had inhuman expectations of it before I was elected, but I've learned at the end of the day, it's just a group of people trying to do what they think is best for the present and future citizens of the town that they love. You know, just after being elected, it seemed like there were big barriers between certain members of council, but as time wore on, those artificial barriers seemed to come down, and real discussion and a commitment to the best result for all residents of Dawson, present and future prevailed. It didn't mean a 7-0 vote on everything, but it ensured a healthy discussion and a critical look from all angles. We all had separate visions for Dawson Creek, too, and I think after time, we came together and combined those ideas and tried our best to communicate them to staff. I think it's going to be so important for us to redefine where we want to be in the future. Got some issues, some matters like Site C, different pipeline proposals, and LNG that are going to force us to ask ourselves who we are and what we want Dawson Creek to become. And I've told you what I believe over the last three years, I hope I have, in community and sustainability, got to push diversification, but remember our roots, to not pursue prosperity at the expense of our identity. But my time to use this seat to communicate that is almost at an end. The vision is that infallible goal where we and staff get our direction from, and it'll need to be addressed quickly, and could possibly be an area of improvement for the next council. But there are many more areas for improvement for future councils. The work plan on the fiscal gap needs to be implemented. The public engagement that goes along with it needs to be done in the broadest, most inclusive way possible for it to be successful. The most rewarding thing, I think, over the last three years was seeing what you fought for come to reality, was getting things done. We had plenty of that in the last three years, and we've had even more, and will have even more in the next four years. We began a process to make sure our neighborhoods are better built and planned, completed work and opened the Calvin Crook Center, successfully consulted on the public on the state of our water supply. We changed water conservation measures around to have everybody participate in them. We now have access to much more water storage at Bear Hole Lake, built a sewer line, well, or just about completed a sewer line to the north end of town, preventing, hopefully preventing backups on Chamberlain Drive, adopted a principled benefits continuum, user fees and charges policy, began work on the fiscal gap, and added a subsidy to the Dawson Creek wet rage. We tried our best to treat people fairly and really took new steps to engage the public on matters that affected them. The hardest times I had were times where you knew your opinion differed from everybody in the room, but you had to speak your mind anyway. But I found those were the days that I felt I was being the best counselor that I could be. I'm so excited to see someone for, who has done so much for Dawson Creek, get reelected. Paul has fundraised millions of dollars for community causes he believes in, and Mark, it's obvious he'll provide some fantastic insight and much-needed diversity to this council. My advice to the incumbents and to the newly-elected as well is to do your homework. You can avoid a lot of pain and gain a lot more time and respect early on by looking into things. Remember your conscience and endeavor to be consistent, but try to work with everybody. You line your work up for success a lot more if you do, if you do that. It's not very often you get an opportunity to do so much good for this many people. It's important not to take it for granted. Dawson Creek's got a lot of challenges and opportunities facing it in the next few years. It's a really steady, yet surprising city. In that way, I think it's a very Canadian city. It's consistently at the forefront of issues. We took a leading edge on environmental sustainability in the past decade, and now we have the opportunity to be a leader again with this new approach to the fiscal gap and to meet the challenges of the future. Dawson's always been dependable, and it doesn't try to be something that it's not. It's got great skies and better people, and it's a really special place to me. It was a great three years, but I thank the people of Dawson Creek for profusely, and I love you guys.
Thank you, Duncan. You absolutely, you absolutely have demonstrated the class of what a counselor should do, and for your age, you've been a pleasure to have that maturity of an individual representing your community, and we will miss you.
Thank you, Dale.
Sue.
Wow.
I should have went second.
I didn't write a speech, but that was so eloquent there, Duncan, and that's, and that's how you are at all our council meetings, and, and I just, you know, echo everything that you said, you know, and, you know, being on council and being part of the decision-making and trying to make the right decisions for all, for everybody in the community, the relationships between counselors, and all of that. You know, this, I've been here for six years now, and, and I haven't, I've enjoyed it. Just when you think that you can't learn, you just keep on learning. And with every new council, you're learning again. But, you know, I enjoyed it, and I know that I've grown as a person, and the projects and the things that, you know, that in my terms that we accomplished over the last six years, we got a lot of work done, and, and I'm really proud of that. I'm really proud that we got that multiplex up and running, and, and it was pretty awesome to... to go to the opening of the Calvin Crook Arts Center. So, you know, it's been a good year, good six years. I'd like to thank the people that supported me, and I'd really like to thank all of my fellow counselors this past three years, and the counselors that I worked with in my first three years. And I wish you all all the best in your decisions and contemplations for your next, for your term, your four-year term. And I know that you'll all do well, and you'll make the right choices. And thank you, Dale. It's been a pleasure, you know, a brief time, and I've really enjoyed it. And you are a great leader, and you're, I know you're going to bring this new council forward, marching and making great decisions, and keeping our city a great place to live. So, thank you.
Thank you. You know, honestly, it certainly is, right? It's been an absolute pleasure for me to have the honor of sitting at this chair and have you guys at the table. We miss the relationships. We value the history that we've built together and appreciate that, and wish you guys both the very best in terms of whatever next steps those hold for you. But sincerely, thank you on behalf of the citizens of Dawson Creek for your representation and your commitment to the community, because that's what builds it. So, thank you. It was great.
So, next item, item four, we have council orientation, and for the new council, and for, we'll have a session on November 26, 8:00 a.m., for orientation period. So, I just want to give that as a heads-up to you guys, Councilor Parslow.
Yeah, one question. We're finishing at noon, for sure?
Yes. Yeah, we have.
Yes, the mayor's indicated he's leaving if we're not done at noon, and you've indicated you're leaving if we're not done at noon, so I guess we're done at noon.
Okay.
That's fine. I don't mind having another half-day, but I commit it after.
Yeah, we'll be done by noon, and I think it'll be a fairly seamless process, because with the two new and Paul having had the experience, it's just we're just going to have to drag Mark along, that's it. So, it'll be four hours.
And Your Worship, you probably need to speak to incoming counselors Rogers and Jevatkov at this meeting about your event on the 25th, the day before.
I'll be getting ahold of them tomorrow.
Yeah.
So, the next item I want to deal with quickly, we have the National Day Proclamation of the Child, and they had a request in their staff for a swim pass, or a swim day, I think it was. Jim, can you just expand on that?
Yes, I can. Actually, my department's all bailed out to go celebrate, my recommendation being overturned, so they're probably three sheets to the wind by now. But in terms of that, the actual request is only to extend what you approved last year. Last year, you already had five hours. This would basically be eight. We have a fund in the policy that can be expanded on community-building events, and folks with limited means, and this event qualifies both ways, so there won't be any problem funding it. We had already built into it to fund the five hours. If you wish to open it up for the full day, we'll have no problem.
Counselor Schuman.
I would like to move that we give them the eight hours for the celebrating the National Day of the Child.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Wilbur, discussion. Counselor Parslow.
Yeah, I'm supportive of this, but just too bad the barrier isn't here. This is a non-instructional day.
Yes.
And I just hope there's some literature, something, it isn't just a swim day. I'd hope there'd be some opportunity for the group that proposed this to engage with parents who come, if they can be encouraged to do that, or, and all the swimming staff do something with them to make it more of a, you know, awareness of day than what it might otherwise be.
Thank you. Any further questions? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. We had a presentation from Brenda and Mona step up and ride in regards to the December 27 event they're hosting for the hockey game for Ice Rental Cost. Counselor Parslow, go ahead.
Well, isn't this a mute point? Will there be an event December the 27th?
Through Your Worship, that event, if the tests are all good, it will be at the memorial. If the tests are not all good, it will be at the.
Kin.
Kin. And as you know, you have a policy that says you will not waive fees for these fundraising events, because really then the taxpayer is contributing twice. They're contributing once for the subsidized amount, like the game rate is around $500. But that's not full-cost recovery, the taxpayer already subsidizing the difference. And then you would turn around and give taxpayer money to the group, and then they would run their event, and then they would say that they have raised the money, but actually, what they've got is a grant from the citizens, and they don't qualify for a grant. So, your policy just says, no, you wouldn't do that.
Counselor Paul, Mark Malkinson, you had your hand up?
No, it's the same point.
Counselor Parslow.
I just make the motion that we decline the request.
Thank you. Seconded. You three?
Get me on.
Counselor Malkinson, discussion. Are you ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. We had a request from Golden Cabs in regards to the taxi bylaw, and he was asking for us to review that bylaw. Jim, do you want to speak to it first?
Yes, Your Worship, it is indeed confusing. In fact, shortly after we had received the letter from Golden Cabs, Kevin and I were standing at the back window looking at a cab dropping off someone at Spickers', and we assumed it was a Golden Cab because it was maroon with the gold flashings, but actually when it came by, it was a Yellow Cab. Many municipalities do have bylaws that have such distinctions in them, and we could certainly prepare some amendments for your consideration. There'll have to be a transition period, because at the moment, Golden Cab specs their vehicles to a certain paint, et cetera, and at the moment, Yellow AC, the operator can supply whatever vehicle they have. So, you'd need some kind of transition period, but we could bring you back stuff to look at.
It is a little ironic that a company that intentionally calls themselves Golden Cab in the hope that you will call Golden Cab when you might have meant Yellow Cab is bringing this forward, but it's a very legitimate concern.
Counselor McFadden?
So moved.
Moved. Counselor Schuman seconded, discussion. So, we're going to bring back a report from administration. Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. So, we are at 12:30.
Caitlin.
Sorry?
Caitlin's thing.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I forgot Caitlin's thing.
I thought, because I funded it, she was done, but she's not done.
Counselor Parslow?
Well, it seems, again, this request, I mean, is a grant, and it doesn't qualify under grants as according to our policies. So, I think, I think if we work hard and support her, we can find the money for her through different groups I'm familiar with, so.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Schuman.
Yeah.
Discussion. Counselor Malkinson first.
Sorry. I'm just wondering why there's a presumption that she wouldn't qualify for the grant.
Oh, just let's do one example, you know, we are the last resort. You have to have gone to other groups, et cetera. Am I correct, Shelly, in that regard?
Yes, you, we, our policy says firstly, we won't contribute to operating expenses. It says we'll only contribute to registered societies with reported bookkeeping. It says that we won't be the court of first resort. So, in a number of ways, it doesn't qualify under your current grant.
Regine? Counselor Schuman?
Yeah, but maybe we can't give you a grant, but coming here today and sitting in our delegation's chair, and our good people at Shaw TV and streaming us online, you know, there's a really good chance that that money is going to show up, and Counselor Parslow has already said he's got some names that you might pursue.
She's got my email address.
And the mayor's going to buy your folders, so that's really gracious and generous of him. But, you know, coming to council and sitting in that delegation chair and getting in the news, it'll bring you the funds you need, all right?
Thank you. Counselor Wilbur?
I'm just wondering, though, if we can also provide Caitlin with a letter from the city saying that we completely advocate with her on sourcing out that funding, and we support her endeavor within the community. I think that might go a long ways when you're asking for some funds.
I'll give her a letter when I give her my check.
All right. All right.
Thanks. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you for coming in. So, we have committee of the whole. How do you want to handle that for?
Lunch.
Lunch is here.
Lunch is here, so you might want to take a. We'll take a, can we take about a 10 or 15, 15 minutes just to grab a bite quickly? Does that work for you guys? Are you all right?
Can our guys eat with us?
Thank you. So, we'll take a 15-minute break and come back after lunch and complete this. Back to order. So, we're finished mayor's business diary. Nothing on the diary, Your Worship? Consent calendar.
I move it, Your Worship.
Moved by Counselor Malkinson, seconded. Counselor Wilbur, discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Strategic priorities? Nothing on the chart, Your Worship? Question and answer?
No one has signed up.
Strategic priorities, chart's on again. Question and answer, period? No one signed up. Okay. Committee of the whole reports. So, item 14-1, we have a report from our staff sergeant about who's away today, so we're going to have the sergeants step in. Good morning, good afternoon. Thanks for being patient with us and appreciate you guys coming in.
So, is stock monitoring, did you give your feedback how to do this?
I'm here for support. Strictly support.
It's just support.
As you probably read, there might be a handoff coming up.
Good morning, good afternoon.
I guess as far as attached news is, we've still got a couple unfilled vacancies, two members waiting to be transferred. We've lost Constable Gray last week officially. He's, should be taking up shop in Parksville. Who's also our exhibit custodian. Those two will be missed by us. Good people, and they do a lot of our detachment. And I guess at that end, we're going to be working with city staff to try to fill that full-time municipal position. There's some good news on the staff in front. After nine months, my replacement on the watch has finally bought a house here in Dawson Creek.
We hope anyway.
Hopefully. We'll be here by mid-December, so I'll be on the ground. But I'll tap her out with some bad news, is that what we've alluded to, Sergeant West has also got a deal pending on his house, so we could be losing him shortly.
Is that the same deal?
I'll just sit in council with very perceptive.
And at that end, his replacement has yet to be named. It should be coming sooner than later. North District's been on the phone with us, just waiting for the go-ahead to say yes, this person is the designated candidate. As far as calls for service go, they've been up since October last year, up almost 40% at 875 calls for service. I guess most notably, been a number of fires being set, arson's, they were released that with some abandoned vehicles, dumpsters, one abandoned property. We've been working with the Dawson Creek Fire Department, Deputy Chief Fulton on that. We've got one person named as a suspect, but the investigation's still ongoing with those, and even though we've got a suspect named, we're working to put all the pieces together on that. But for now, the fires seem to have abated, and hopefully they'll stay that way. We've had one traffic prevailing on our roads, and that'll lead me to another point with the change of the weather here, which is, we've asked the public, press releases, to slow down in general, especially with intersections, slow down and to provide more space for vehicles. Our collisions are upsharable since last year. We just want people to pay attention to the road conditions, basically. Oh, our guys have picked up a bad guy here in town with 51 outstanding candidates who work.
Holy.
Well, he was a resident of our town, and now he's a resident of Donborough in their people's system. Good news all the way around.
I like it when you get the bad guys.
Oh, absolutely. Let's see here. If you're driving, it remains to be a problem. I don't know just how specifically, but our guys are out there beating the streets. We've had a 121 to date, and, well, if you count November, that's 11, it is 11 per month. And still out there, the message is not getting across, but I think we're doing a really good job of keep getting these people off the road, because we're finding, we're out there in all the places. Our mischief's have gone out. We've talked to our guys, we're out there doing patrols. Hopefully, when they're doing mischief, our patrols are in the same area. There's nothing targeted, there's nothing, it's not all one thing, it's just sporadic, but for some reason, they just seem to get up this month. But we're hoping on top of that, just waiting for the numbers to get like you. On the GIs front, we're still weathering the disclosure storm. They've got two big files that they're finally finishing up, and hopefully they'll have the crowds soon, which should feed them up to more proactive enforcement. Other than that, it's got its own departure, that's all I have.
I'd like to take the opportunity to, because I won't be giving another COW report, I've handed off that to Mike to do, and the new detachment commander will probably be carrying forward from there upon his arrival. He's been named its Staff Sergeant Marcel Guebo from Fort St. John. But in the interim, Mike will be carrying on the COW reports. I wasn't here to chaperon today, I was here to say thank you. It's been great. I've received good advice from most of you on council, and mayor, as well as the Chief Administrator Officer Jim Schuman, who's been a good sounding board for me, I know he was for my own. I carried on with that, and for a while there, I bugged him almost weekly, sometimes daily.
It's amazing how much time I have now, actually.
And meeting the counselors at the rink, because as you know, that's been a big part of my life, with the hockey and figure skating, and now double hockey and impending goalie. I'm going to need some overtime on the other end, when I get down to the southeast district for a little light gear. But it seems to be a passion of hers, so it's one I'm going to let her follow until she decides after she takes the first good or slap shot somewhere that she doesn't want it.
Doesn't want that, right.
And that's going to be her decision to make, not mine. I've come to enjoy the community spirit, and the matter-of-fact frank approach to things in Dawson Creek, which are also truthful, and leave the lively discussions around the rink, and in other places throughout the community. I've appreciated it, my family's appreciated it, and I can only hope that we've been able to contribute something. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, any questions for Sergeant Richard?
Not for Sergeant Richard, but the other guy, Sergeant West. You said you appreciate advice from most of the council. Who are the exceptions? Counselor McFadden?
There's been a few cases where there's been a difference of opinion, and it's been appreciated nonetheless. I haven't interacted with as many of you as I would have liked on a personal level, but I know that quite a few of us have crossed paths on numerous occasions throughout the community. A lot of the thunder that I had has been stolen by a specific counselor who's outgoing, and I'm sure that there's another counselor that can appreciate my position as well. Very eloquently put, Duncan. Very eloquently.
Thank you. So, Sergeant Richard, thanks for your report. We appreciate it. We look forward to having the ongoing.
Next time.
Next volumes. And.
We like poetry.
Poetry, yes. Milo set the standard.
I tried.
He did try.
And to Sergeant West, obviously, we're sad to see you go, but obviously, we wish you all the best in terms of your future. It's been a real pleasure to have you help and guide our community in the aspect of public safety. As we lost Milo and we lose you, we gain those new folks that are coming in and bring that hopefully same level of passion you've done for our community, and we appreciate that, that you've absolutely stepped up in every regard, and we certainly appreciate it, and wish you the very best and your family. And as Sergeant West said, we've got Staff Sergeant Marcel Guebo from Fort St. John, who will be the replacement, and I don't know if that's been, obviously, it is now officially announced.
There's a replacement of a replacement, because I was Milo's replacement, and obviously he's coming in to replace Milo still, because Milo's job was vacant, and we still have the sergeant's position, which is in thrills of being announced. I would expect that it's in the handle log, was it, they do their background checks, and then they offer the.
then they offer the promotion to someone. So it's in its final stages. I'm confident in that process. I wasn't part of it, but I know that you're gonna be receiving a quality candidate on sergeant's side of things, and you're gonna get your staff sergeant. He'll be back, so you won't have to be acting in that stance.
Superintendent Booth, that I was involved in the process, and I met with him a couple of months ago, and he's committed to us that Staff Sergeant Kibo is in the acting position of inspector in Fort St. John while they're filling that position, but has committed that with Sergeant West's departure, that they will escalate that move for Staff Sergeant Kibo to Dawson Creek to ensure that we're not putting all that on Sergeant Richard. So hopefully, and when all that comes through, that we'll see the replacement flow for the city and citizens. But again, we just really appreciate the leadership you guys have displayed, and appreciate it on behalf of the community and the public safety. Thank you.
Come back and visit.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Next item fourteen-two, we have a report from our fire chief. Good afternoon, Chief. Thanks for being patient with our meeting today.
There, how's that? So, you have a report in front of you. Nothing outstanding that I can, I can talk to? I'm just going to use the notes. October again, firefighters wore pink t-shirts for, in support of cancer awareness, and we received some donation of pet oxygen masks that we carry on our bunker truck now, so.
Nice.
It's designed just for if we find a cat or dog or some kind of pet in a fire, we can actually give them oxygen and attempt to save their lives, so. It's a nice donation.
And you guys have a November event at Boston Pizza on Saturday?
Yes, it's on Saturday at Boston Pizza. The firefighters are going to be selling beer steins, not beer mugs. Beer steins with information and some other one gonna have. I was gonna join. I've had this since high school, so I just couldn't see myself shaving it off and starting over again.
The same ones.
Thank you. So any questions for Chief? We actually had a presentation again at Regional District last week, the, and I'm gonna say, I think it was Ron Rogers from Fort St. John, his wife or spouse, that donated the pet mask.
Yes, okay.
And so they've donated them as a gesture to all the fire departments in the northeast, and they made a presentation to the Charlie Lake Fire Department when we were there on Thursday, and I think it's just a great gesture from members of the community and the region to be able to do that, put that forward, and what a great generous offer. So I'm happy to see that detachment got theirs as well.
And I'm happy that the fires have stopped for now.
Yes.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Item fourteen-three, we have a report from the Director of Corporate Administration. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thanks for attending.
Anytime. I won't go on with anything, just if there's questions, but, well, actually, there is two things. I'd like to introduce our new staff. I'm very excited. We have Kelsey Friesen and Sabrina Hall. And we're very excited to get things back up full action, moving ahead.
The mayor found it a little bit lonely when Julie left, walked by, and there was nobody there except the CAO. Every once in a while, it was a little disconcerting. So I love seeing those three chairs filled.
We had that little bell there for a while, and there was nobody there. We'd hear the bell ring, and then Tyra and I would come from both ends.
Welcome.
So we're thrilled. Thank you.
Happy to have you.
Just in regards to the election, there was a question, how much the budget is for that, and it is twenty-five thousand dollars, and it was all used up. Advertising costs were increased, when both the papers combined, by like thirty percent, so, and that's a big part of our budget. We did get a response back in regards to our bus service. A hundred-and-forty-nine passengers used the bus on Saturday. And the Christmas party is scheduled for December sixth at the Curling Rink, so stay tuned. We'll see what happens with that.
What date is that?
December sixth.
So the upstairs is affected right now as well as the downstairs?
Because if the ammonia leaks, it could leak, it could leak on the ice surface, and it could find its way throughout the building.
Thank you. Anything further? Any questions for Brenda? So I had that question over the weekend of people, and asking me approximately how much the budget was for the election, and so that works out to twelve-fifty a vote approximately, when you figure you got under, just under two thousand people vote for twenty-five Gs. Anyway.
Oh, sorry, and I do wanna thank my election staff. They were excellent back there.
Thank you, Brenda. Anything, Counselor Malkinson?
Did I hear correctly, either via social media or this morning, that Dawson Creek was the first in the province to post results?
Yes, it does help that we're now ahead of most of the province, but we were first in the piece region.
We were first in the piece region.
That's right.
Well, and I got screwed up, because I was trying to see what was happening with everybody else. Like, as soon as we knew, I was like on Civic and phone, and I'm like, what the hell? Where is everybody?
Had to wait for an hour.
Oh, wait, it's only seven o'clock.
Did you note that Fort Nelson voted positively in their opinion referendum to
Change your time.
Change so that their time mirrored ours? Whether that's even possible is a big question.
Yeah, I was wondering about that, if they can just do that or not.
Thank you, Brenda. Item fourteen-four, we have a report from the Chief Financial Officer. Good afternoon. Welcome.
Hi there.
Hi, Shelley. Hi, Shelley.
I'm so glad you could do it. Well, no, there was three reports that came to council, and you've heard them all, so me repeating them is kind of redundant, but I just can't believe that we're starting a whole new cycle. It's gone so fast, and we've accomplished so much, so. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Just a comment. It seemed to me, looking at one of those reports, that development in this fiscal year has been slower than the previous year. I mean, from the point of view of increase in assessed roll and all that stuff, you know, you had, you made a comparison between current and past years. So it seems to be that a slowdown, is that...
In the roll?
In the, in the development, in the assessment increases, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, in the preview roll, there was a decline. I think, I don't know the numbers off the top, but I think it was like eleven last year, and it's down to seven. But what was interesting, I didn't have time to comment this morning, is that of that increase, though, the report that you've seen was sixty-two percent is non-market, so that's new construction. And I received a new updated report from B.C. Assessment this morning, and that went up further. So of the increase, it's more like seventy-two percent of the residential increase is non-market. So it speaks to the volume of the folio increase. So even though you've got market stabilization, you're still having unit increases, so they're higher than what was forecasted in the budget. So I'm thinking that's gonna be good news for the infrastructure upgrades that we're looking at, so.
You know, speaking to that, to me, when I looked at the historical, the statistical history of the roll from two thousand to two thousand and fifteen, the city of Dawson Creek's assessed value in commercial, or residential in two thousand was two-hundred-and-fifty million or two-hundred-and-seventy million, and at two thousand and fourteen or fifteen, it's one-point-three billion.
It's gone over a billion, yeah.
So anybody that says our community hasn't seen any kind of growth or any activity, or Dawson, same old, same old, the assessment on residential development in our community has gone up by a billion dollars in fifteen years, and commercial has gone from seventy-six million to four-hundred-and-fifty million. And so there has been a significant change in development in our community over the last fifteen years, and so, and for me, and we saw it in the public hearing this morning, the anticipation and what we face as a community in the future, I believe is that, just that much more significant, that we need to be aware of it. So I thought it was great information. Thank you.
Yeah, it's just another step in the process, and the thing is, is that as you go through these steps, you get pieces of information that you can just retain as you come to the numbers at the end, and it just brings it all together and integrates it, so.
Thank you, Shelley. Any further questions?
Not to be a damper on this, but normally, when the value of your assets increase, you're happy. That's kind of what we all aim with in our investment portfolios, but then the tax bill comes, and you're less enthused about the increase in the value of your place, so enjoy it now. The tax notices won't be able to...
Thank you.
We know about this.
Any further questions? Any further questions for Shelley? Thank you, Shelley.
Just, sorry.
Yep, go ahead.
Maybe I'm rambling a little bit here, but it's related to this topic. But you know, one of the things that I think an education piece needed in the community is the thing that Jim has shared with us a number of times on the research, as it relates to the fact that residential development ends up costing the city. In other words, the costs of operating, servicing, et cetera. This really is the commercial and industrial base you want to increase. Did you read the article that was sent to us about the city of Calgary encouraging residential development in other communities, because of the same situation? So there's some of the presenters today seem to present the notion that because our residential assessment, you know, was growing up, that we're gonna benefit from that. They talked about the fiscal gap. It isn't. It's just gonna widen the fiscal gap if the research and experience of other communities applies here. Am I correct?
Well, of course, I would be trying to stop you, providing new or opinion information about a public hearing, if I hadn't already concluded we were gonna have to have another public hearing on the matter. But yes, you're correct. The introduction of development cost charges has gone a long way to reduce that gap, where residential construction adds more cost than it generates in taxes. But you have, you do multiply by two-point-six-seven your tax rate on non-residential classes, so they generate two-point-six-seven times as much tax, and it's usually a very similar road or water line or sewer line, and so they tend to pay for themselves and generate surplus, and residential tends to not pay for itself.
Thank you. Any further questions for the Chief Financial Officer? Thank you. Report fourteen-five, we have a report from the Director of Infrastructure Sustainable Development.
No, he's not. He's the Director of Operations.
Yeah, whatever. I got an old name tag, yeah.
It's the old one.
It's the old one, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Good afternoon, welcome.
What is the title then?
No, no, it's just an old tag. I didn't even know. Creating confusion.
I don't think we can fit the title on that.
Well, good afternoon. So a couple of reports. First one is the building bylaw report, strong month in building permits, just shy of ten million dollars. I have a feeling that December's gonna be a strong finish to the year. I suspect some people will be getting in with some building permits. So that, to date, brings us to fifty-one million and change for 2014, for building permit values. And as we've discussed before, the good news is that is actually an artificially low number. That's our number on how we value permits, and the reality is, is that the assessment authority will value those same projects at a much higher value, so it's even more optimistic than that. It's real dollars, real investment in the community, so. Twenty thirteen, we topped out at fifty-five, so there's a really good chance that we should, we should match or better that by the end of December, so. Again, two-hundred-and-forty-eight dwelling units to date. I don't know where they all are, but they're out there.
I've seen them all listed under Curl.
Well, I mean, you are, you do see that about a third of our new units added are suites. That's where we are right now, and will remain unless you make changes. And we can't tell you what will happen if you make changes. You've heard from some folk who think you can expect a loan.
His are single-family dwellings with suites, though, right? His aren't the duplexes with suites?
The permits you're seeing there are single families with suites, and I believe they're in ours too, anyway, so I think they are not affected by any change you're contemplating.
One thing I wanted to mention on the bylaw side of things is that we recently had a case go to court regarding a vicious dog, and I think that's the first one we've been challenged on, and glad to report that everything went well, and we won the case, and the individual had to pay the fine, and I think it was very important that we went through with the process, because it sets the stage moving forward, that if we are challenged...
Was that the one that was attacking them through the fence and when bylaw went? Yeah.
So, good news. That was just the first part of November here, went through.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
This court case, obviously don't want any specifics, but has there had some litigation in process around development in our community? Has there been some litigation initiated to do with any, thing to do with developments in the community?
So there is, council issued a positive direction regarding an industrial subdivision and a failed lift station. That matter is ongoing. We have had, actually, maybe a third of your responses in the public hearing at one point or another in the response mentioned their intention to seek legal counsel, but none of those have been filed, and we have the ongoing, there's one trip and fall ongoing, and there is the ongoing item that shows up under building inspection, but involves the individual that you all recall with the motorhome.
Yes.
And that's probably gonna be carried on the books for years.
Yes.
On the public works, engineering side of things, quick update, the sewer trunk line. So it is all but complete. There's some cleanup items to finish, and all the connections are made. Sewer is flowing through the new trunk line. We have one more connection for hydro to make over by Third Street, Park Hill Drive. That needs to be completed just for a diversion chamber, but other than that, the majority is complete, just some cleanup items.
I would want to say I appreciate the efforts made to mitigate the disruption and all that stuff. I thought you guys were operating at the best. You really did a good job.
Yeah. Yeah, there was a few hiccups, but generally, it went pretty well. We had a pretty good construction season, as far as weather, right up to the end there, so that definitely helped as well.
We greatly appreciate the efforts of Caribou Road Service, because the abysmal state in which we had our contractor leave their sewer trenches was quickly swallowed up on Facebook by the kind of large speed bumps out by the airport.
Oh.
We appreciate their effort. We'll probably return it at some point in the future.
I was like, where was he going?
It's a good strategy to get deflection, Brian.
Counselor Welber?
I, actually, I just wanted to say, you know, thanks to Kevin and Sean on the cruise, because there was some roadwork that needed to be done over a weekend, and they quickly got on it, like, within minutes, not even, I mean, literally within minutes, and took care of it, and I think that's kind of where it dissipated to the speed bumps at the airport, because they realized there wasn't anything else left to complain about. So thank you to them for getting on that, because those are craters, not potholes, so greatly appreciated by that neighborhood.
Thank you. Yep. Loran reservoir, Loran booster, Loran water main up in that area, all completed and commissioned. Everything's pretty much ready to go up there. And I think there's a bunch of other, other information in here, but probably the last thing I'd touch on is just the effort the crews and are hired helped it on the most recent snowfall we had. We were very fortunate to, able to have the majority of our staff handy. Some came back from holidays to assist, and then we were also able to hire some equipment, and that certainly enabled us to get the roads cleared in a very quick order. I think it took us three, four days to get everything done, which simply hasn't been done, and I don't think before, so that was, it was really nice, especially that first, first big snow dump, so kudos to them. Thanks, Kevin. Yeah, I honestly, I really appreciate the fact that they, Sean, you guys...
and you guys getting it pulled together. And nothing, right? I get no feedback at all. And I don't know if council did in regards to anybody concerned about the speed in which we were dealing with the snow removal. And in no time, downtown was done and hauled away. So I just, kudos to everybody, so.
So to anticipate what you will hear the next time?
We had a bunch of favorable circumstances come together. To begin with, the first snowfall of the year met your standard for a snowfall in a single event that kicks in, your full blast, we'll have it done in six days policy, we'll rent equipment. So then also, our employees gave up holiday time, came in willingly, worked overtime. There were six private graders, I think five loaders and a skid steer all available for rental. So what will happen now is we'll get more normal snowfalls. They'll come five centimeters at a time. We'll work through them. We won't get into the residentials because the policy doesn't let us hire. And people are going to say, oh, yeah, just before the election, you threw everything you had at it. And now you could care less. It's just the policy works differently when you have the big monster snowfall. And we were very lucky with available equipment.
Anything further, Kevin?
No, that's all.
Any questions for Kevin? So the one thing in the report, and I don't know when, but the Alta Gas proposed development was a $25 million proposal. I'm understanding they're moving forward that we haven't had that permit pulled at this point yet?
No, they, they have not. They've, I've talked to them a couple of times regarding some designs and just tweaking a few things. And no, they haven't pulled the full permit yet.
Good. Thank you. The one thing I will note is, you know, when you start to see the kind of development, the kind of activity that's going on in the community and the pressures that are put on the Department for Infrastructure and Sustainable Development. And certainly, I watched with interest the news story last week on Fort St. John where they're hiring and getting a study done on their development process within the community and doing some analysis on that to ensure their policies and how they handle the development of their community moves forward with a much, much bigger staff than what we have and probably $100 million worth of development up there this year. I'm not sure what. Certainly, I think it's a discussion for us in the future in terms of the amount of activity, the amount of development occurs, and how we handle that pressures for ensuring that we have the process in place to steer that development for the future. Just an interesting, it was an interesting news story for me. Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate it. Item 14-6, we have a report from the Director of Community Services. Good morning, Barry. Good afternoon, Barry. Welcome.
Good afternoon.
Thanks for coming today.
Duncan said he didn't want to come up front with me now because last time he wasn't asked any questions.
I have a question for Duncan, sir.
Come on up, Duncan.
Anyone who insults my sergeant team, I'm forced to swear. He has to sit in the front seat.
You swore, Duncan.
I swore, Duncan. I confess, yeah.
I documented the time and the date.
And the team color.
And the word was fuddle-doodle.
That's what you said?
That's what I said. He interpreted it a different way.
Welcome.
Welcome. So a number of items, and I sort of feel a little tired. But first and foremost, I wanted to recognize Darcy again for council. I've had to leave this in some staff's hands. So if you haven't received something, then just want to know. We're having a couple of dates for Darcy. We have our, our staff meeting this Thursday, and we'll have a cake. And we're doing a potluck internally with the staff. And I think there's a cake. So there's an opportunity to come down, say goodbye to Darcy Thursday, anywhere between 11:30 and 1:00 downstairs. And then he's, he's going away, lunching his next.
On the 25th.
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Because you're meeting. The Wednesday. So Tuesday. And that'll be the fix. And should be invitations going out, or please track me down if you want to come over and say anything to Darcy. It's kind of rare that you get anyone that's 35 years in our service. And he's going to be, he's going to be missed. And he's, we hope to send him off in a nice way. If anyone wants to contribute to that gift, we're hoping to send him up to Phoenix area. He's on a bit of a breakaway with his wife. We want to extend that vacation and send him off in the only traditional way he'd like to. That's attending a Montreal Canadian game in Phoenix. So if he's want to throw a couple of dollars towards us, we'll, we'll put him in the kitty there.
Did you say the Thursday was at 11:30?
11:30, I think. But I'll confirm. But you can stop in. We'll be downstairs with, I think that's what it is. It could be noon, councillor.
Okay. I'm just going for 11:30.
On a positive note, we're reaching three-quarter of a million people through our Kenbork Aquatic Centre pool. And that's significant. Anna has put together a small, a little recognition of that. And those are just amazing numbers over time. Now, some of the concerns we had, I can, I can say that on a, on a, other positive to that, the climbing wall numbers are up and so are the pool over the last year. But that's the positive side of still a continual strategic direction where Duncan is working very closely with that staff to make it even a better place to be every day and looking at new scheduling and, and new opportunities there as we move forward. So both the walking track and, and the climbing wall numbers are good, and our revenues are exceeding. And that's, that's where we need to be. So that's a critical part for us. A number of things within the Rec Race Department, I don't need to elaborate too much. It's really good that the Memorial in Ken had a very positive October with the challenges ahead, which we found in November. And I thank council for that direction today. By any means, we're starting to get the emails from the user groups already. We'll be working very hard with them on scheduling. And I think one of the councillors alluded this morning, or Jim, that they've been working very hard together. Everybody is getting a piece of something. And, but we still have some challenges around those weekend and some, some big events coming up. One of those would be the Totem Skating Championship, which usually requires two facilities, full bore, and it's well over 220 athletes. So we've got some, some big hurdles, but we have been able to accommodate. The junior bees played out of the Ken Arena. We've moved the concession over. And all user groups to date have been very cooperative. So that's, that's a positive note. But they're not letting us off the hook by any means. And now I'll be looking for some additional scheduling. I'm going to leave any questions up to the capital side for Duncan. But also, some councillors would have seen both the events with the female jamboree and our Olympian Shari Piper were, were awesome. And we hope to, Shari's already agreed to be, come back next year. And I believe we still have one more year of some committed dollars of the legacy money of 2012 that Ken comes back out of us from BC Hockey. So that's a positive as well. And there was also one that we will update council on our staffing model with Darcy leaving. That will be brought to date, updated to the council next week on those movements forward briefed from our council. And I would think that I would probably easy enough to say that the Christmas tree light up this Friday is a great opportunity for us to continue to move forward. November 21st, 7:00 PM. I think everyone gets involved in that in the community. It's very positive. And I drove by, I think, this morning early, and it looks like a pretty solid tree.
Well, I think we'll have quite the same experiences last year.
No. So we thank the oilmen for that and look forward to that. So any couns, any questions can be directed towards Duncan, please.
Thank you, Barry. Any questions?
Charlie?
I have a question of Duncan.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. I thought.
No, no.
Duncan, tell me about the art gallery. I learned that you have an idea of, that maybe rather than repaint the woods there, that we might be replaced with another product that's already pre-painted?
Sure. So right now, I'm out with the contractor, and I've asked them to put together some pricing with some different options. When we did the museum, we ended up having to strip, and it's, it's half stripped right now. And weather permitting, we'll get going again in the spring. And we needed to strip that building because it had that, that design, the beveled wood on the corners, and it had a specific design that we would use. We'd lose that heritage aesthetics if we didn't strip that building. The art gallery, it's just a board, right? It's a, I think it's a two-by-six overlaid board. There's options such as hardy board, or we could strip and paint that. I mean, we could put vinyl on there if council wanted to do that. But again, it's that historical value that we're trying to maintain. And when we put our capital together, we'll have those options kind of laid out and look at that. But hardy board is probably the one that you heard about. And it's essentially a dipped board that would have a lot more longevity than just a painted board.
So is likely that the total cost would be less than stripping, you know, and all the stuff with the environmental?
We still have to dispose of that wood. If we do a hardy board, we still have to pull all of that board off. But what we found when we did the grandstand, that pulling that board off and disposing of it was a lot easier than stripping every piece of lead paint off of it and disposing of the, the stripping, right? So there should be a cost savings, but I don't have those quotes back yet. I'm putting them together for capital.
Another question, is the art gallery itself a municipal heritage building?
I'd have to go to Jim on that one. I, I don't believe it's designated, but I'm not sure.
I was looking into it.
I don't think it is. We have, you did designations of four or five buildings. It included the museum. Maybe it included the art gallery.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
We can find that out for you.
Okay. So because the question, should there be funding available, not necessarily from the city, but from other sources for teaching classrooms attached to the art gallery and obviously blending in? Are there any impediments generated or extra requirements kick in because it's a municipal heritage building?
I think we addressed that in a report that I had written to council. I, would have been when we were looking at an elevator on the building. I believe we, we addressed it. And I can try and dig that information up. Just, I think it was more around the aesthetics of the building and that monument in the community, but I'd have to dig that report up.
Yeah, I seem to remember something that, as long as it harmonized and it was acceptable to council that it was in harmony with that NAR park theme. Who wouldn't mind just being updated on those things? And these are things that Shelley heard as well at the last South Peace Art Council meeting. But it'd be great if there's options you're talking about will cost less money than the painting route.
Yeah, and that's what we're trying to do. We want to keep the, the historical value of the building. But, you know, our job as staff is to try to find the most feasible way to do it, cost effective, but still maintain that.
Well, and one that will last more than 10 years would be super awesome.
Yeah. And that's, again, the contractor's going to provide a couple, couple different options. We've asked them for something that's going to, to last. And they'll come back with that, and we'll have to review it.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Anything further for Barry and Duncan?
I just had one last comment, Duncan, on capital. I think just, just a bit of a plug is that I think when you look at the terminology of a deputy, it's overseen and sometimes misunderstood. Every one of these capital projects, I know Kevin and Sean had a lot as well, but every one of these capital projects were completed or had fingerprints of Duncan, except for Crescent View Park. So that's a real testament to that capacity. So wanted to say that. And from the department to the two councillors departing, I know we're both huge proponents and supporters of our department. So we will miss you, but good luck and happy retirement. And councillor Duncan, good luck. Thanks very much. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Media question period. Anything, Johnny?
Yeah. I have a couple of questions. First would be about the rural sewer taking Fort St. John's effluent. So basically, the motion on air, what is that? The City of Dawson Creek will consider accepting effluent from the north piece if the alternative approval process or if the regional district goes through. Other than, I'm just looking into the motion.
Yeah, we, the alternative process, approval process that the piece of a regional district through the electoral area directors are moving is to see if they are willing to fund that capital projects. And it's ending, it is due to end that public consultation process at the end of January. And so once we have that completed and we understand then, if they're moving ahead with it, then the city then can consider, yeah, we're going to provide the service. But if we provide the service starting January 1st, and it doesn't proceed at the end of January, then we have to be the ones to cut them off. So.
So basically, you're not?
We just want to make sure clarity in the.
Until they have.
That's right.
And our risks are mitigated.
Right.
Johnny, it's not Fort St. John's effluent. It's the rural areas. Don't, don't say Fort St. John effluent.
Right, okay.
They'll be really confused.
Is the issue that Fort St. John is a wonderful, affluent service, and it's basically all in Dawson Creek to step up there? Is that at all frustrating in anyone's mind?
No, it's, so it's just, it's just the infrastructure design of Fort St. John in terms of their concerns about how and what it will impact them. They're saying, we can't continue to accept that service or provide that service to the outlying areas. We're saying, we, with under certain conditions, will be willing to work with the electoral areas and the regional district to try to provide it.
And with the residential development and the zoning bylaws, that has been, the decision on that has been charged on December 15th.
That's right.
And Jim, you said that it's uncertain that there will legally have to be another public hearing. Do you have any idea what that might occur?
So what I would expect the process would be is it would come back as it stands on the 15th. And we would get a full flavor from the council then seated about, you know, generally how they're feeling about the provisions. But regardless of whether or not they wished to proceed without any changes to the proposed amendments or with changes, we believe there would have to be another public hearing, mostly because of the changeover in council. You have two councillors who take their oath December 1st. In the meantime, they are under no oath or prohibition from discovering information about this. And so a process has to be constructed where their information is shared, basically. So that's why you will end up with a public hearing.
Great.
Thank you. Anything further, Johnny?
No, I have to do it.
Thank you. So that concludes our open. I'd like to now recess to our closed.
Leadership.
Sorry?
May we resolve to allow councillor-elect Rogers to attend the closed portion of the meeting?
No.
I don't think.
No.
You can by resolution.
So I just.
That's not how it works.
So I want, I'll have administration answer the question, please.
So two issues with that. Again, there is no oath of confidentiality yet taken by Mr. Rogers. And so he would not, he would have no constraint upon him, except his judgment on, on what was, what was released or is not. So it would norm, you could, you could, I believe, by resolution of council, admit him as a delegate to the meeting to hear those things because you were fine with that. Or you could not, you know, it's, but again, he would be a delegate. He would be a, an observer, not a participant.
Yeah, right.
I think that's not.
So.
I'll move it.
Moving, allow councillor, councillor, Mr. Rogers to attend as a delegate?
Sure.
Do you have a seconder? Councillor McFadden, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It carries. Councillor Parlow didn't vote. So.
I'm sorry. I was looking for what's, I forgot what was in the agenda.
So we're recessed.
So you have two items. You have a land item and a personnel item.
So we have, we're recessing to close.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you.